Councilmember Burr?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Ness?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Sharp?
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shepard?
Here.
Now the Library Commission, we have Commissioner Chin?
Yes.
Then we have Chair Huckberg. Then we have Commissioner Landauer. We have Commissioner Moss.
And we have Vice Chair Train.
All right. Do you have a presentation you want to start off with?
Yes.
Okay. So, my hope with this presentation is to keep it very brief because I think the questions you'll have about what we've done in the past year or so will be much more interesting to you. And we can dive deep into all of these topics. So, is there a clicker to get the next?
No.
All right.
Here and here.
All right, thank you. So, we are the Library Commission and, all right, so we have a few topics to cover and basically these were some subcommittees that worked on different aspects of projects that we wanted to cover in the last year and a half. And then this was a, I mean Mitchell Park Library is the Mitchell Park Library Project and Main Library is a recommendation that we made and voted on to rename the Main Library. I wanted to cover some of the background of that because there was some question about that. And then we'll have time for Q and A. So, metrics and finance. So, there was a subcommittee that looked at how do our libraries compare to other libraries in comparable sized cities? And the good news is we are near the top of, in the top four of pretty much every metric that we looked at. And so, we're doing very, very well. We can get into more details if you're curious and in fact, if you look later in one of the appendices, there is a, the actual data that looks kind of like this spreadsheet. Also, this subcommittee looked at what sort of metrics are we collecting and publishing in a regular basis? And are they the right things? Are they actionable? And we decided to revise what the library publishes, you know, to the public to look at more information like virtual library visits and computer usage in certain ways, meeting room usage, which is not something we necessarily were tracking because we didn't have meeting rooms. So, those are the sort of things that you would see. And you have one of the more recent versions and it looks kind of like this guy. So, also the virtual branch. The idea of the virtual branch is to allow anything that you can do at the physical library to be done online, like reviewing materials, but also, you know, doing things to your account or seeing other digital services. One of the issues that we found was, and that's been talked about for a long time, is that we don't have great access to this information even though we have a huge number of resources that we offer. So, in 2009, the technology plan actually laid out a plan to lead us to expose these services better. But then we came back in 2012 and as formed a subcommittee on the LAC that said, you know, this isn't really moving very quickly. We need to really see why. And a couple of us started meeting with different stakeholders, including our new CIO, and said, okay, what do we need, you know, what are the roadblocks that we need to remove to make this really happen? And thankfully, in the most recent budget, a capital improvement project was approved for this very project. And so, this project is actually happening, which is great. The Mitchell Park Library, while we are not out there hammering nails and doing other construction work, we have been, you know, discussing with the librarians what sort of services and activities are going to happen at the, at this branch when it opens and giving feedback. We're also involved in the subcommittee, or sorry, a multi-functional committee that is talking about the activities for the opening week. And also, you know, there's, there's a lot of, as the LAC, you know, we are sort of limited in what feedback we can give to the staff. It's really the staff that's actually doing a lot of the work to plan for this building. And so, we're just giving our feedback as needed. And you can go with the next. So, renaming Main Library, this was something that came up in our, in my, you know, planning meeting about, for this meeting with the mayor. He wanted to hear a little bit more about why we made that decision because it has not been, it was taken off the consent calendar. So, we recommended renaming the Main Library to the Rinconada Library. Forgive me if I'm mispronouncing it. When it reopens. And there are many reasons for this and one of which is Mitchell Park Library will actually be a much bigger facility and the biggest facility in town when it reopens. So, it will not be the Main Library anymore when it reopens. We actually asked the Palo Alto Historical Association historian and community service director Greg Betts. They came and gave presentations on both the historical reasons for being called Main Library and also the eventual plan for the Rinconada area, for the art center, the park, the pool, and to sort of reintegrate that as a, as a community campus. We considered different names, but Rinconada was actually the name that seemed the most appropriate considering that the other libraries that are named for either geographic location or a nearby park like Mitchell Park or, you know, College Terrace in downtown are geographic. But the name of that neighborhood is called Community Center and that, we didn't feel like that was a particularly great fit for a library because it was a little confusing if you call it Community Center Library. So, that's why we recommended that. And you can feel free to ask other questions about this if, if they come up. And last but not least, so, this is a very boiled down version of what we created as part of our, a subcommittee, which is an advocacy presentation that we felt would help members of the LAC or members of the library community to present to other groups in town about what's going on at the libraries because there doesn't seem to be, the only news that really comes out is, okay, here's what's going on at Mitchell Park and the delays or, you know, here's what is going on with the construction project. And you don't hear as much about what's really happening, what, what new benefits and services and activities can happen at this library when it reopens and what's really happening overall with our library system. So, we created an advocacy presentation that can be presented to a neighborhood association or some other, you know, public group. And you should see a copy of it in the back of this. We were hoping to present it today but realized it was, you know, outside the scope of this presentation. So, thank you.
Now, did you want us to return to council for questions?
Yes, please.
So, just a very simple one. Renaming the Main Library, which has been the Main Library for a long, long time. What is, what is the cost and what kind of outreach would you envision? And I don't know whose idea it was to rename it. So, is it, is it the commission's idea or somebody else's? So, maybe I'm asking the wrong group.
Well, initially, I'm sorry. Initially, I believe it was a comment by Councilmember Klein perhaps at some previous meeting to consider renaming it. And the, so the, the LAC reviewed the history of Main, reviewed the history of that location. In terms of cost, one of the reasons we need to make a decision at this time is because the signage package for the renovation needs to go to bid. And so, the difference between Main and Rinconada, as you can imagine with the number of letters, would probably affect the bid. In terms of other potential costs, because it's, it's folded into the renovation project, there's very little that needs to be changed. Most of our publications are things that are updated regularly, so that could happen as a matter of course. And the electronic, you know, information, it's just a matter of staff time to make those changes. And if there was a second part to the question, I've forgotten it, I'm afraid.
No, as I said primarily, it's the cost and what your outreach would be in order to let people know.
Right. So, it would be using, utilizing all of our regular PR outlets, whether it's press, social media, working with libraries in the region to notify them. There would be changes to, you know, labels in terms of Link+ and things like that, but very limited changes that would be required.
It actually is probably more accurate to be truthful to have it named specifically in such a way that you can differentiate if you're coming to Palo Alto, the difference between the Rinconada Library and the Mitchell Park Library and the Downtown Library, whatever it may be. I think it's probably not a bad idea. I don't know what other colleagues have thought, but...
And it does provide some confusion right now. There are a number of people who will come late to a meeting with me at Downtown because they will automatically go to the Main Library, assuming that's where library administration is. So, because our services are decentralized in that way, it does create confusion for that reason.
Larry?
Yes, I believe guilty, I think I did bring it up. I still like to read any of it, it's a good idea. But I'm a little distressed to see his name Rinconada since we have a park named Rinconada and never one person named Rinconada. And so, I'm really intrigued by you deciding not to recommend to us naming it after one of the, say, restore our figures and all of the contributions of our community. We don't often get an opportunity to do that. I still favor frankly naming it after a person. Mitchell Park is obviously named after a person. Here's Mitchell.
So, please speak more to that if you have a chance. And also, you may have more current information, but the last I heard is about a month ago was that the Historical Association had not yet taken a formal position. Oh, and one last thing, you're mentioning a schedule. That comes as a bit of a surprise, so you ought to let us know as to when do we have to make this decision?
That one works good. The, I think that the construction manager for Main would like me to give them information as soon as possible. I think when we're done with it, that's, you know, the timing. And did you want to talk about the decision or the?
I have, there's someone else.
We did, we did receive an email from Paha saying that it is historically accurate or fine to name it Rinconada and that they had sent us an email acknowledging the requested change. So, that was, we had received that.
Did they say that that was their preference or that it was okay?
That it was okay. There was not, there was nothing else beyond that.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to add that we had an extensive presentation about the Rinconada area and how the plan eventually was to, with signage and landscaping, to kind of pull it together as a cultural and activity area. So, you know, there, you can walk from Rinconada Park to the library and the art center. And the idea was that when it comes time to actually put all of this in place, that the walkways will be much clearer with signage and plants and that sort of thing. And we did very carefully review the naming policy and so, after some discussion concluded that it would be better to support the idea of the Rinconada cultural activity area, and I'm blanking as to what the name would be, but everything matches that way. Does that help?
Sure. Bob, did you want to, you were looking like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I also agree in that I made the motion to change it. I thought that Councilmember Klein's proposal was very appropriate. And in terms of notifying people, one of the things we talked about was, well, when Main closes, you know, it's closed already, people are getting used to going into the temporary facility, the art center. And then when we're ready to reopen in about 10 or 12 months, we'll start putting notices out to everybody that the library is reopening and, oh, by the way, we've changed the name, so you're going to see these, it's going to be Rinconada, but that's what you're accustomed to calling Main. And so, it's, it's part of the ordinary, the library is reopening and, oh, by the way, it's being renamed. We didn't think it would take much time, effort or cost to inform people that way because we have to tell them the library is going to reopen and these are the features it's going to have and, oh, by the way, one of the features is a new name.
Pat?
Well, I...
Can I make a pitch for the council to use the microphones because we're not hearing you on the broadcast unless you're speaking in the microphone?
I'm inclined to be interested in, in looking for naming it after a prominent Palo Alto historic figure. Rinconada encompasses a lot and it, I think this library deserves to have its own name identity rather than being subsumed within the park's identity. And, and I, you know, I can think, coming to mind, you know, I don't know, I don't recall Mitchell's history and who he was, but I think most of us are going to remember for a long time who David Packard was in this community. And, and there are other very prominent figures who I think would be worth considering. This is, it's a pretty significant naming and, and it doesn't have to be based upon, like at, at Mitchell, we were looking at, at donations and affiliating with names, but I don't think it necessarily has to be that. It's a reflection of the community and the values. And so, I have one other topic though, which is around the new Main Library. We see that we're, there's a lot of criticism in the community over having an innovative design. And when I look at it, it looks great, but we all know that architecture, like art, is in the eyes of the beholders. I wanted to ask the commission, is there any involvement on your behalf or by you on educating the public about why both the architectural design and the physical design of this library is something that we are very positive and excited about? If we just, you know, we've got some people in the community who will be critical about almost anything that goes on. And if they speak and, and nobody responds to them with, with something more in the affirmative, then they're the only voice standing. And I kind of get that sense some. I think most people probably, one, they love it once they're experiencing it, but I wanted to ask whether it's something that you've been thinking about and, and have any concerns about.
Does anyone want to respond? Monique, would you like to?
Oh, okay. Well, I think it's, it's a good point. In a way, we, I think almost any change, you'll have some people who are naysayers and they can be very energetic and very vocal and probably take up a lot of your time. We had a taste of that in our recommendation of the road, the road path and how it could accommodate a car, you know, for safety reasons. And I think you're all aware that the no's for cars were pretty loud, but when we met with people and we attended the meetings, there was more, we felt more favorable responses to, you know, the ultimate decision, which was safety. I think it'll be probably that way with the Main Library when it is, you know, or the, whatever we, we will call it, when the building is built and the landscaping is integrated with the art center and the pathway around and it will be much easier to park and get in and out of.
Who's meaning the new Main?
Mitchell.
Mitchell.
Oh, Mitchell Park. Oh, well...
I've made my adjustment, Tim.
Sorry about that. I was, well, I guess I had my brain stuck on Newell and Embarcadero. I'll switch them over to Middlefield. I, I think that, again, you know, you will probably be hearing people screaming about the blue wall or a hairy looking plant, but I don't know if any of you have been on a hard hat tour. I went on one last week. And frankly, I think it's going to be better than the pictures.
My, my question is, what's the LAC doing to affect, try to educate the community about this?
I think we will be attending the community meetings. We have Sheena Chin here who is meeting with the stakeholders on the planning week, the opening week, and I'm sure we will be hearing her reports. And it's a good suggestion because I think that that is something that we will be taking up in the future.
There's one primary way we're going to get the word out and that's when Mitchell Park is getting ready to open. We're going to get the word out, here's what's going to be available for you and it has all of these new features. And this is why we think they're really going to be useful to you. You know, and we'll talk about the meeting rooms, the study rooms, the special children's area, all of those. And right, right adjacent to it is going to be the community center, a restaurant, coffee shop if you want to call it that. You know, these are the features that you're going to have in your new facility. And we're hoping, and the, the new type of electronic checkout because now we have room for it, so we can use these tags like they have it, for example, at the Mountain View Library. We couldn't do it in Palo Alto because there was physically no room for the equipment. Now there will be. So, it'll be easier for you to check out and will it be easier and cheaper for us to get the books in and put them back on the shelves? All these things we mentioned to the community when we're getting ready to open the new branch. Now, there are some aspects of the library that, the one that I've heard the most about is the blue wall facing Middlefield. And I want to say right now that the Library Commission did not design the colors of the building. So, we...
You're not supporting them?
We only looked at the, at the layout. We didn't look, and we looked at the elevations. We didn't look at the details except the fact that we're going to have the, the green building, you know, on the roof and all that. So, we will take no responsibility for the colors.
Bob, if I can, if I can add to what Bob said, the original reason I applied to be on the commission was because I saw the original first, very first designs of the Mitchell Park Library and thought, my God, how terrible. I'm going to do something about it. I got on the commission, it's almost six years ago. And then I realized, well, the commission is not full of architects, it's about what's going on in the building. So, the LAC is really, we are not responsible for the, the skin of the building. That's, you know, the Architecture Review Board, I presume, and, you know, associated commissions. We just want to make sure that the space inside is planned well and is designed to accommodate all the activities we imagine and is flexible enough that when books are digitized, much more and maybe we don't have any paper books or it's, you know, certain, such a miniscule number that you don't have to completely tear down the building in order to use that space, which is not the case, you know, before redoing these libraries. So, really, that's, that was our purview and, you know, Bob covered the, the details. But, you know, it's very personal to me because I remember seeing, wow, this is really, you know, an interesting design, but it's not really for us to, to deal with. However, the green aspects of the building are something we can educate the community on because I think those are very interesting to the tech community.
I actually would like to slip in on the positive note of what we are doing though. You haven't seen the advocacy presentation. We just decided it was too much. But if you do actually go to it, and I could direct you to page six, we actually do, when making presentations, call out some of the great features of the building, the LED certified, the, just a lot of the things that are being done in terms of the children's programs, the integration with the teen programs. There's going to be a lot of work going on there, bringing in kind of mixed use on programs that are going to be supporting Safety Net. So, you're not hearing our advocacy program, but we do actually, that is something we've done, so we're not saying it's not our responsibility, we didn't do it. It's just a program that we, we didn't have time to present to you, but it is in fact a fabulous presentation. And so, these are just quick slides, but it is a good presentation. And then also, as mentioned, there's a very serious effort being done, planning the opening of Mitchell Park. Lots and lots of thoughts as to how long the event will be, what days the events will be, what kind of activities will be had, who will be invited. And I think you'll find that grand opening, the way that it is currently stacking up will be truly grand. I think it will be something that this city has not seen in a very long time, certainly not since I've been here.
Greg?
Yeah, I'd just like to talk a little bit about the numbers and what it means. Seems to me we are in a period of great change, adaptation of our libraries to the new world. And the numbers have very, very positive aspects to them, despite the turmoil of, I mean, libraries close now, or two largest libraries close. The visits are remaining very high compared to other libraries in California and the rest of the country. Downtown and College Terrace, the new redundant libraries are doing very, very well. What's striking also is the circulation of both books or materials and virtual uses are, are very high, ranked number one among comparative libraries. So, I think, you know, talking about the future, the virtual library doesn't displace the use of a library, but maybe the two grow together. Circulation remains high despite the closures. The new things that are emerging, very strikingly, are the use of meeting rooms and programs across all ages are going dramatically. So, different ways of using that the community will be using libraries and going for different things, different purposes. I guess two things that seem to be stuck or going down or not verified are the books and collection materials are declining and that's the part of the library. Square footage is expanding. And then reference use of libraries is way down. I guess that's an indication of a different type of user in Palo Alto who is utilizing sources but not necessarily having to go for basic reference, which has been displaced. So, I guess my base question is, what can we expect over the next two, three years as our libraries reopen? What changes will be most prominent? Can we expect both virtual and material circulation to continue where they are? Is the reference an indicator of that falling as a prime center of the library? And what about our books collections? So, just a couple of questions for you to think about, respond to.
I can answer that. So, the trends that you're seeing in terms of reference questions are typical throughout the country. Libraries are looking at new and innovative ways to, they're actually, Douglas County, for example, in Colorado, is using what they're calling embedded librarians. So, they are librarians who are available in other community services and other nonprofits. They're, they're available to help people, teach them how to use databases, for example, or provide some assistance to, in other areas. So, we're, we're investigating that as a practice. We think that that would be probably very well received in Palo Alto. We think that that would be probably very well-received in Palo Alto because of the sort of high-touch, you know, high level of customer, personalized customer service. We are, you know, while the reference questions may go down, it may not be because of lack of quality interaction. Somebody, rather than spending 15 minutes answering three questions about, you know, the gross national product output for different countries, you could be sitting with someone, showing them how to download an ebook, which takes a longer amount of time, but it's only one interaction compared to three. So we are looking at, you know, a variety of options that way. Obviously, when we closed Main in May, circulation and attendance took a huge dive. The temporary Main provides, and you don't see that reflected in your statistics yet because we're still gathering the final statistical information for the last fiscal year. So those, you know, the service level right now at temporary Main is probably just a little bit more than College Terrace. So it's a very low number. Use has gone up dramatically at Downtown, about 30% over the month before, and it's gone up at temporary Mitchell Park as well. So we're seeing some increase in other areas, but the numbers for the next, you know, year until we get Mitchell Park open and going and then really get Main really going, those numbers will stay lower than they have been. Our virtual use has been up, and you'll notice in one of them that virtual attendance actually was greater than in-person attendance. So we, and for the first time, we had reached that level. So what we have available online, you know, is very useful and relevant in allowing people to answer whatever their information needs are.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate all the work that you've put into this presentation. I know we originally had you scheduled for the winter and the spring, and we're delighted that you're here. I have a couple of questions. One, some were asked already, but one is, what is the professional and working relationship between Palo Alto Public Library and Stanford University? Is there, you know, as professional librarians share best practices or look at the future, it's a slightly different constituent group, constituency, but I'd be curious about that.
Well, we do, we do work with different departments at Stanford, not necessarily the libraries. When you, you know, when you're going to library school, earning your master's degree, it's sort of like becoming an attorney. At some point, you make a decision, you're going to work with people, you're going to work with money, you're going, you know, there's, so academic, school, public libraries, special libraries, all different disciplines. We have been working on developing a speaker series, and we do have professors and, you know, authors have done presentations at the library. We would ideally continue that when we really do have a full suite of space for that. And going forward, another outreach mechanism that we would like to begin and have not been able to at this point is to, for incoming students, provide an orientation and information packet that includes what resources the public library has available to them and encourage them to get a library card. I think there's a lot of times, at least I remember when I was in college, where the public library provided a nice escape from, you know, sort of what I was doing. But at this point, no formal sort of arrangement.
Thank you. And if there is one challenge that you haven't had a chance to mention from the LAC perspective or from the library director's perspective, what would that be, challenge that you face?
Let me start. The challenge that I see is that the way people are using libraries and the way they think of libraries is changing and changing fairly rapidly. And in the last two or three years, we've seen a big increase in people using libraries just to go and be there, if you will. They have meetings, they have study groups, they use the computers, they go online with the computers to do research, they take out materials, they ask the librarians for information on how do you find this, either physically or online. So there's a lot more variety in the types of services the libraries are providing. And that's reflected in the new design, for example, of Mitchell Park, where we put in a lot of meeting rooms and a lot of study rooms. Because, I don't know if you were, if you were ever in the old Mitchell Park Library on a school afternoon, but you couldn't walk because the kids were all over the floor. They came over from Fairmotto and JLS and they just took over the library because that was where they wanted to be. And we expect that to happen in Mitchell Park whenever it opens. So fine-tuning how you provide the areas and the services, and I can just see, well, we've had this a little bit with Downtown, where we have a couple of small meeting rooms and people are fighting over who's going to get the meeting room this hour, you know. So, and we didn't have that five years ago. There wasn't that need for it. So celebrating our services and our delivery to the new things that people are looking for is going to take some imagination and some look, some careful looking. I think we're on the right track, but to be honest, I won't know if we've really got there or we're basically in the right ballpark until Mitchell Park has been open for a few months and we see how people react to it.
Karen?
Yes, thank you. A couple or three questions. Thank you for the presentation and certainly all your hard work. I didn't see in trying to adjust this in real time, the square footages of our libraries, say for instance, College Terrace, Downtown, you name it, is there any indication that per square foot that Palo Altons use our libraries more than other communities, or have you looked at it in that kind of relationship? And if it's here and I just haven't discovered it yet.
Oh, well, we actually do have high usage. We address that in the advocacy slide presentation. If you look on page one, and, you know, it is a very crowded slide, but the first slide is to find out where, say, the audience would be coming from in a presentation. But Palo Alto, Palo Altons, this one right here, the, how many of you?
This one? Okay.
Slide number two.
You know, we have the visits per capita. If you, if I can direct your attention to page one of the printout, where the visits per capita are 13.6 and the U.S. average is 6.1.
I'm actually looking at this a little bit different way I saw this. What I was thinking about, and I don't know if it's helpful or not, if it's not helpful, just tell me to drop it, but per square foot of our branches, do we have any kind of data that shows like, you know, for a library the size of College Terrace, it just like blows the numbers out of the park or anything like that? Or is that even helpful? It seems like it would be, but I could be on the wrong track.
I can calculate that for you later, but what we have is the visits per branch, and I can go back and determine the square footage and give you a number later.
And just how that kind of compares with other libraries of comparable size.
And we have, on the public library statistics, we do have some data on other libraries, Palo Alto and others. And I can probably find, for example, the, just as a simple example, Menlo Park and Mountain View have identifiable square footage for libraries. And so I can go into, go online and pull those down and tell you how many visits and how many books are checked out per square foot for those branches and compare with Palo Alto. It isn't something that we normally do, so we don't have a team.
The reason I thought it might be interesting is because, you know, we did have this long debate about should we have branch libraries or not, and it seems like it's been a really, really good investment. And the return, the return on number of visitors and circulation, both has been a very good investment, but I don't have any numbers that actually demonstrate that. But, and then I had another, oh, yes. In terms of services offered, what I haven't noticed being offered is classes or instruction offered for people, how to do research, either online or through hard copy. So is there that kind of instruction offered? Like, you can do simple research, but then how do you do in-depth research? And people, I think, sometimes know that they can find some things online, but how do you do really deep research on a given topic? So is that, is there that kind of assistance, that kind of classes available and assistance available at the libraries?
Yes. Yes, there are. Actually, we have a couple of librarians who focus almost exclusively sort of on the, what electronic resources there are, what kinds of databases might be most useful, especially right now as we have a reduced, you know, reference collection, things like that, with the libraries being closed. That's where the emphasis has been. And they do that with class visits, they do it with, you know, schools. We do have, like, the adult school will come and we'll show them either basics, depending on whatever level that person or that group is at, we can do that. So, yeah, that is something that we do, we do regularly.
And that's a pretty well-publicized program, it sounds like. I'm just not aware of it.
It's mostly, you know, it's mostly done on a case-by-case basis. We have in the past, when we had the meeting room at Downtown, done things with adults using technology, like ways to use Google more in-depth, you know, using Google Scholar and things like that, and then tying that into library research. But at the moment, with the limits on the available space, that's been a, that's been a particular challenge, so.
I would think there'd be a great need for that in this community, so. I'm glad you do it, at least on a case-by-case.
Absolutely.
And maybe publicizing it more as a program, given you have staff. Thank you.
Well, it definitely seems to be a really exciting time to care about and be passionate
about the libraries in our community. I think over the next year, with the opening of Mitchell Park and the opening of Main slash Rinconada slash Packard slash whatever we end up calling it, you know, more folks will be paying attention to our library system in Palo Alto over this next year than probably have over the past five or 10 combined. And so kind of echoing what some of my colleagues have mentioned, you know, definitely take advantage of that opportunity. It's the opening of Mitchell Park Library, I think, will be like the opening ceremonies of the Olympics, and it's a great opportunity to highlight. And it looks like, I was flipping through the slides, and it looks like a lot of these slides, you know, do that, and definitely just keep in mind how at every, every opportunity along that week or however long the, you know, the process goes, take advantage of highlighting a lot of the hard work that you guys have done over the past six years or longer, or however long you've been engaged. And speaking of taking advantage of opportunities and taking it back to what we started the conversation about, I think now absolutely is the right time to change the name of Main Library. I don't know whether, and I had given it no thought until 45 minutes ago, but I don't know if naming it Rinconada Library is taking advantage of that opportunity that we don't get all that often. I think it's definitely easy in terms of, you know, tying it into the other city assets around there, but I think there are other ways that we could, you know, make sure that it's clear while also, you know, maybe being a little more creative in, you know, the name that we choose. So I'm not saying that I'm 100% opposed to Rinconada, but I think that, you know, we should definitely think outside the box a little bit and try to find some other options to compare it against. And I know that's probably a hassle on the time front, but I imagine we can do that fairly quickly and hopefully not have it muck up the plans too much.
Okay, can I borrow yours?
Sure.
Well, I almost feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone, that you're actually talking about what you're going to do when Mitchell Park Library opens. So how exciting, and how exciting for you to be on the commission during this time. I just want you to know that I haven't received an email for quite some time about the color of the blue, the Cuban. I think they wanted to call it Cuban. And I think that, you know, when I did, I would say, well, you can go right online and take a look at it because this is kind of what we passed in a bond measure, so it's, which was so heavily supported. So this is really a great year for the city of Palo Alto to have Mitchell up and running, and I'm excited about that. I really, I appreciate the concept of naming the library after a person. I think that that's a nice idea. I also like the way you came about Rinconada, and I love the word for Rinconada. I think it's beautiful view, and it's something that is definitely resonates in the park there. Although you are sort of expanding the Rinconada Park by going across Newell, I think Rinconada might stop right there, but it's, it is identifiable. And I can't remember how we ended up with the name of Heritage Park in, over by the old Medical Center, you know, downtown, but I think that there were some complications, or at least I've heard from colleagues, that, you know, it's hard to, hard to pin down that name. So I would welcome it until something else comes along. I have gotten fond of calling it MiniMain, though, I have to say, so I'm going to be sad about that. And I actually am quite impressed by the stability that the libraries have had, even though we've had to shrink down in square footage and size. Do you, I just wanted to find out if you're hearing from anybody at all at this point regarding MiniMain. I mean, is there, it seems like you're still trekking along with good, you know, good outreach, so are there any particulars about the temporary libraries? I actually do believe that it will be very traumatic when temporary Mitchell closes over at Coverley, because we seem to have a way of adopting these temporary community centers and then, you know, building on them. So I think that it will be sad to see that one go, but I think it's also a great, it's been a great useful tool for the community. So have you had any experiences with the MiniMain opening and any complaints, or? I haven't had any, so.
The commission hasn't heard anything. We haven't had anything, haven't had anybody come to us and say we've had a problem, and I haven't seen any emails or anything, so I'm not aware of any. I don't know if anybody else has heard, but I haven't.
No, I'll say that the reception for that has been overwhelmingly positive. I do hear from a lot of people who say, oh, well, you're going to leave temporary Mitchell Park open when you open Mitchell Park Library. And I look at them and I say, no. So I know that they're very satisfied with that service. For example, the library will be present at the JCC Litquake this coming Sunday. We will be, we're a cosponsor and will be present there. And I know from last year's participation at that event, nearly every adult said, I walk by that library every day, I love temporary Mitchell Park, it really does a good job. And we, you know, just tell them, well, wait, wait, just wait, and when you see what we can do in Mitchell Park, you'll be blown away. So I think that overwhelmingly, we've had a good response, and I appreciate your comments. We've done as much as we could possibly do to streamline the service so that Main Library was only closed, was closed for less than a week, you know, moved the Link Plus service to temporary Mitchell Park and restarted that two weeks early. You know, the staff has really knocked themselves out to maintain as many of the services as possible so that, you know, there's very little disruption.
I think that's what I found so amazing to see, that you just didn't skip a beat. And it would have been so tempting to have just postponed Main until Mitchell was open, but just rolling with the punches, moving forward, and then this will all be behind us, you know, in about 12 months, so.
First of all, I wanted to thank all of you for your hard work. I know you spend a lot of time, and I'm always impressed when I talk to any of you, how much thought you've given to all the little details in the library. I think that's what's, that gives me a lot of comfort to know that someone is from the community or sitting there looking at all the details. I think what you said is right. It's what goes on in the library that's, you know, your charge, and I think you guys It's what goes on in the library that's, you know, your charge, and I think you guys do a great job at that. And, Monique, I wanted to say that, you know, since you've taken over the library system, I've been very impressed. You're doing a great job, and, you know, I feel really good about our libraries. I think it's going well, I mean, construction aside, but, you know, from the actual libraries. And when you look at these statistics, it's very impressive. With that said, I was just, you know, a little, I just wanted to know, what is the difference between four stars and five stars, and how do you get five stars?
We're going to get five.
We're an overachieving community, I just wanted to know.
Well, I will tell you that City Manager Keen sent me a text, and he said, how come we're only four stars? Redwood City has five. How do we beat them?
That's what I noticed.
Yes. So what's really interesting is if you go into that report and you dig down, there are four area, four criteria on which you're analyzed. We actually beat Redwood City in two of the four categories, and they beat us in the other two. And so I'm not 100% sure if it's weighted in some way or not. I will prepare you that maybe in a year or so, if our statistics stay low while we're, we have both closed, we may go down. But the library staff has said, no, we're going to be a five-star library, we're going to win, you know, Library of the Year from Library Journal, that's, that's our goal. We believe we can do that. So we know, we know, and so we have to find out, get on the inside of Library Journal and hopefully figure out how we can be a five-star library.
And then.
And they do have a very robust literacy program, which we don't have, and I think that counts towards their programming as well.
So I noticed on this, it said there's only 7,513, is that public libraries in the whole country, library systems?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm stunned how few that is for the, for the nation of, you know, the United States. I mean, really? I mean, that's.
330 million.
So I'm just looking on two, where it says total public libraries in 2011, 7,513, of only which 172 achieved a four-star rating.
Yeah, so that doesn't include branches, that's.
Right, that's library systems. That's like Palo Alto, Redwood City, Oak Park, New York City, right? I mean, it just seemed like such a small amount of libraries. So that's a real achievement, then, four stars, 172 out of, you know, in the whole country? I mean, I think that's, that's fantastic.
So if I can actually just put in, because I'm the person who did the deep, deep dive, and I can tell you on the four-star how they rate, and what they actually do is they look at circulation visits, programs offered, and internet sessions. And surprisingly, in our group, one of the very, very highest, in fact, the highest rated in our group, is a teeny-tiny Kansas City library. They have 9.5 circulation per capita, where ours is 25.3. Their visits are 6.9 per capita, ours is 13.6. Their programs are .2, we actually accelerate over them again, .6. And what happens is their internet sessions, they have 17.8 per capita versus ours, 2.4. We have a lot of people who are bringing in their own computers, so you really have to dive down. So I can say, and I really want to, want to call out Monique and what she has done, if you look at how Palo Alto libraries stacks, because I did this, I took the top 30 libraries in the entire country, I looked at, this is the Library Journal statistics of how they do the, the stars, I looked at all the California libraries, it is a fabulous, fabulous libraries. There's, you can look at our performances in terms of taking it to a business model, how quickly do we turn books to the shelf, which is really efficiency driving down our costs. We're down to, you'll see, it's actually something we didn't measure, we do now, we do it in two days. There, the programs we've offered, I don't have on my glasses, but it was stellar, it was some, like, 20-some thousand programs off. I mean, I'm going off the top of my head, but what Monique and her staff are doing is just, it is world-class. It's fabulous, and the people, they all have energy, enthusiasm, they love what they're doing, and they'll greet people, never a complaint. But I would say we are so lucky having Monique and her team, we're really, really lucky.
Well, I think our time's pretty much up, but go ahead.
Yes, my name is Shina Chin, probably most of you do not know me, because I just elected in June. So I'm so sorry, so many questions that I'm not able to answer, because I'm not in part of the discussion and the preparation. But I'm really thankful that Gail had this question, what's the challenge in the future for LAC? I think from my personal point of view, from the statistics, it seems that the statistic is very good, but we have to know that. The statistics, it might be multiple counting, just like the same person used the same item or visited the same library maybe twice, or three times, or even four times a week. I think the challenge is we have to encourage those who rarely go to a library, not those who already use the library. We have to encourage those people who probably never put library in their mind. Probably, library might be the last choice for them to get information or to get some, something they like to know. I think that's the challenge we have, we will have in the future, and I hope that in the future I can answer the questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bob?
Yeah, I want to mention something that hasn't been talked about, but I think we should recognize it, and that's the support the library gets from the community. People really want and appreciate good libraries and good library service, and, you know, every year we get the performance report, the auditor does, and libraries rank right below fire, police, and it's usually libraries in number three, or maybe number four this year, I think that a couple places did, came down a little bit, only fourth out of all the organizations in the city. But we also have a lot of people who provide services. We have volunteers at work, provide thousands of hours of library support, there's friends at the library, have the book sales every month, and they donate between a quarter million and $350,000 a year for books and materials in the library. And there's the Library Foundation, which raised over $4 million for equipment at the new Mitchell Park. And I want to tell you a little story about that. Last year, I was at a library association meeting, this is the state libraries, and at this one conference, one room that we're, one presentation we heard, somebody's getting up and bragging about this small library system in Southern California where their foundation had raised $35,000 for the library. And at that point, the foundation had raised about $3.5 million, another $4 million or anything, so I said, well, Palo Alto Library Foundation's better than that. So far, they've raised $3.5 million, and everybody in the room gassed. We have a lot of support in the community, and we also appreciate the support we get from the council, providing the funding and the positive input that you've been giving us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks to you all for your service, we really appreciate it. Now, if you want to retire to the council chambers.
Well, last week, we heard all about overnight camping in Coverley, and the ban that went through on that, quite an emotional, full, packed house. We're not as packed house tonight, although there's more of that coming. Residents from Crescent Park neighborhood are, want a ban on overnight parking where they are. These aren't people living in their cars, these are people who are apartment dwellers from East Palo Alto who want to park their car outside, and they want something done about it. The city is considering maybe a $5 fee if you, you get a permit to park overnight. There's many more things. The council's been in a closed session, and they're about to come out any minute, and they've been busy. The council was in a joint session with the Library Advisory Commission, and then they, tonight they'll consider a ban on that parking, designated blocks for Crescent Park. They'll consider a ban on smoking at all city parks, and by the way, city parks in Palo Alto, certain city parks are getting that Wi-Fi, which is only in Palo Alto, which is so great. And we're going to discuss neighbors abroad, smart city partnerships. These cities are smart, like Palo Alto. So we're talking Heidelberg, which I think has a team in the Bundesliga, I think, which started this week. I know Freiburg has one, does Heidelberg have one? Maybe they're too smart to play soccer. Because, but, but Heidelberg, of course, a very, or football, I should say. But Heidelberg, always a very beautiful city, and the home of so much of the scientific and intellectual headquarters of Germany. And then there are other cities, there's a city in Finland that wants to get in, and this has to do with partnerships based on technology, on, they call them SPART, and what, and what they can do for Palo Alto, what Palo Alto can do to them, for them, and they will share a similar mission, I guess, a similar existence. They'll be like coastal cousins, I guess, filling in. So smart cities is what that's about. And they're going to revise the city's recruitment process for boards and commissions. So they've been in since 6 o'clock, and council has a busy week, in fact, there's a busy week here in the city. Tomorrow, there's a closed session for conference labor negotiations, dealing with council-appointed officers. And then there's, the committee will discuss ways to, the Policy and Services Committee will discuss ways to assist the homeless population and consider establishing community center hours at Coverley, Lucy Stern and Mitchell Park Community Centers, and that is tomorrow at 6:00 PM in the council chambers, that's the Policy and Services Committee. And then the council plans to interview candidates for the opening on the Architectural Review Board, and that's going to be at 5:30 on Wednesday, August 14th, and that's followed by a closed session to discuss performance evaluations for the city clerk and the city auditor and the city council conference room. Then the Architectural Review Board, the board plans to discuss 537 Hamilton, proposed proposal for Court Sunset Hagley Architects for Design Enhancement Exemption to exceed 40-foot height limit, 11 feet, and that is always a great way to spend a Thursday morning. There's also the Hayes Group Architect Review and the demolition of an existing one-story building there. So that's on Thursday morning at 8:30. And then there's the city, the School-City Liaison Committee. The committee plans to discuss the city's progress on street improvements, the school's district strategic plan, the school and the district's emergency preparedness, safety updates, and that plan, that is 9:30 AM at the Palo Alto School Unified School District. And school is about to start, I believe it starts next week.
So first, we have City Manager comments, then we have oral communications, if you want to.
Pam, the City Manager.
Yes, she is. So Ms. Antle, do you want to start with City Manager comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Assistant City Manager Pam Antle, we have one comment tonight. Just wanted to announce to the community that the city is going to begin work on the golf course in preparation for the flood protection project, and I just wanted to give some details, so please bear with me, it's a little bit of a long statement. Preparatory work is scheduled to begin this week on the San Francisco Creek Joint Power Authorities, or JPA's flood protection ecosystem and recreation project, which will impact the city's golf course. An initial phase of work involves the importation and stockpiling of soil on designated portions of the golf course for future use as fill for new levees and on the golf course itself. You might recall the council approved a contract with Don Tucker and son on June 17th for the importation and stockpiling of the soil. During this initial phase of work, the contractor will be permitted to import up to 190,000 cubic yards of soil, which is the amount authorized under the JPA-certified EIR. Importation of additional soil needed for the golf course will be deferred until the council certifies the EIR and adopts a final plan for the golf course reconfiguration project later this fall. Beginning the importation of soil now will enable the levee portion of the creek project and the golf course renovation to get underway as soon as possible in 2014. To accommodate the soil stockpile area, several holes on the course will be shortened, with the par score of the course reduced from 72 to 67. I just want to say, this is really going to change my game, too. Especially since I don't play golf. The course will remain open for the public use until spring of 2014. Starting later this week, approximately 90 trees will be removed to make room for the soil stockpile. The tree removal is authorized under the JPA-certified EIR. Beginning August 19th, soil hauling will occur Mondays through Fridays from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM via Embarcadero Road to Gang Road. The soil importation is anticipated to continue until the arrival of winter rains and resume again in the spring. Overall, the city's proposed project to overhaul the entire golf course is anticipated to require the removal of as many as 600 trees. If the council approves this project after completion of the environmental review, the city would place, replace the removed trees with a smaller number of native trees, shrubs, and grasses more appropriate for the baylands. The balance of the mitigation for tree removal is proposed to take place at off-site locations that would benefit from an increased tree canopy appropriate for those locations. The city is partnering with nonprofit organizations, including Canopy, Actera, and Magic on the specifics of the tree mitigation plan. The goal is the replacement within 10 years of the removed tree canopy. Thank you.
All right, and that concludes City Manager comments. So now we'll move on to oral communications, and our first speaker is Claiborne Carson, to be followed by Palo Alto Free Press, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Claiborne Carson, Director of the Martin Luther King Jr. Research and Education Institute at Stanford, and I'm here to announce a partnership with the city to And I'm here to announce a partnership with the city to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom. And the commemoration will be in King Plaza in front of City Hall. And the date is August 26th. And it will start roughly about 5:00. The main part of the event will start at 6:00. And we anticipate the day will be a recreation of the spirit of the March on Washington through, mainly through music. The oratory of the day, we will have a photographic exhibit out in front of many of the civil rights photographers who are in the Bay Area will exhibit their work on large banners. And there will be a large banner on the front of City Hall itself. So that's the plan, and I'm open for any immediate questions.
We don't really do questions at oral communications.
So thank you very much, then.
Thank you very much. Palo Alto Free Press, to be followed by Paul Mitchell.
I'm really pleased to see that the San Francisco Creek is going to be, project is going to be underway. And as a young man, I have extremely fond memories of San Francisco Creek. I think I had mentioned a few years back that I pulled out many a catfish. So I'm hoping that that's going to be restored. I also remember as a young man during, much to the chagrin of both my parents, I would take inner tubes and jump into San Francisco Creek and free. ... editor come before all of you from this podium to address issues concerning the community. Essentially, they've all become armchair warriors, and isn't that sad? So I believe that I have set a precedent as the executive editor of Palo Alto Free Press to come before you. Now, you may not like it. Sometimes I can just kind of sense that you would much rather not be communicating with you at all. One of the other issues that concerns me over the years is the Human Relations Committee and their lack of involvement in a really important issue that recently has come before this city council, and that is the vehicle dwellers. They have been woefully absent, absent in this regard. And I think, Pat Burt, you had mentioned earlier on that you would like to see them become involved even more so. That hasn't been the case. So all of you should be asking the question, where has been the Human Relations Commission when in fact that is their commission? To address conflicts, discrimination, injustice, while encouraging community building and civic engagement. They have failed in that regard, and I don't think a single council person here has even addressed that issue, and I'd like to know why. Why? That's what they've been commissioned to do, is to take care of these issues, to address these issues. What about the parking issue that's going to be addressed this evening? Where have they been absent?
Thank you. Paul Mitchell, to be followed by Herb Bark.
Good evening. I'm Paul Mitchell. I live in Palo Alto. I'm a writer and I do research. I was on the executive board of the Urban Ministry for a period of years just before the merger becoming envisioned. The thing that I want to speak about tonight is my opposition to the plan that is supposed to begin at the end of this month of closing the showers at Coverley. The showers are a community service project that had been in place for 10 years, perhaps. The reason they're closing these, I'm not quite really sure. But the plan is to close the showers, which also have a locker room. Those lockers are the ones that were used by the athletic teams when it was still a high school. So the plan is that they would go to the Opportunity Center to use the showers there. The problem is that there are only two showers for the men at the Opportunity Center, and they're not working right. They had put meters on them last year, and the meters don't work right, and you have to put quarters in. So this is supposed to be the Opportunity Center. So you have to pay for your showers at the Opportunity Center. So I believe that the women are taking showers in the men's room because the women's shower does not work. So they are planning to bring plumbers in and so forth. But my really important point is that there's not enough room as a place that they want the people to go. And there's plenty of room at Coverley, and there's no reason why this can't be properly coordinated through civil service, through, through the services. That's what I have to say. My opposition, I feel it would be a mistake because what is there now is adequate. If you send it over to the Opportunity Center, they're not prepared. They can't handle it. They can't handle what they've got right now. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Bark, to be followed by Grover Amos.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. I come to speak on the stockpiling at the golf course that the Assistant City Manager referred to, and she added one fact that might alleviate my concerns that was not in the press release itself, and that is that the approval basis for this was not part of the golf course EIR, which is just in the draft EIR stage, but rather the JPA Creek EIR. And under that, the city is a responsible agency. So if that JPA EIR came before the council and the council approved it with this removal of the 90 trees, then that's fine. I just don't recall. And if it hasn't, it's just not enough that the JPA approves the EIR, but the council, since it's a, the removal of the trees is on city property that's under the council's jurisdiction, the council would have had to approve it. And you probably know better than I whether that's been before you or not, because if it hasn't been, that would have to be done before the trees were removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Grover Amos, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Hello there. I would just like to comment on, not to step forward, but step back from the general air of negativity and say that positivity and giving ourselves a round of hand for having this great forum for local issues and being able to talk to one each other is really something we should, we should do. We should, we should look ourselves in the mirror and pat ourselves on the back each and every day. And I just want to say, you're on the radio, in person, anywhere, it's always great to be here. And I want to, want to thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Munoz, to be followed by A.J.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. I'm Stephanie Munoz, and I noticed in the paper that the city, the sister cities program is expanding, and it's going to take on more of a technological role, more of a business role. And, and congratulations, because the various councils over the last 50 years have been working toward that, and, and it's a really good accomplishment. And my mom, I guess that's one of the reasons she liked Palo Alto, because my mom was like that, too. When I was 19, I would have been, I was a junior in college, and she took us three girls over to Europe, to France, because she wanted me to have that third year abroad, like the girls at Smith and Vassar and Radcliffe. Well, I don't think she realized that those are special programs that are set up long in advance. There are special classes that they go to and special families that they stay, a whole lot of stuff. We just went, and that was fine. I got to the place where I was going to stay because at the school, they put me in touch with a potential roommate. And it was a bourgeois home, an apartment on Cours Verdun, sort of like that Grand Boulevard thing you've been looking at. And I think it probably had been their dining room. It had nice parquet floors. It had the nice carved sideboard. I think these people were on their uppers, but everybody was after the Second World War. This was in the 50s. And when I went into the bathroom, that was the big surprise, because I had never seen, I mean, it was clean enough, everything was clean, but I had never seen dust in a bathtub. It was mind-boggling. It turned out that that was because they never used the bathtub, because there wasn't any hot water. And so every week or so, I would trudge over across the city, and it's a fairly large city, to the Kuwus, and I would take a wonderful shower with a hot, a hot shower. This is a big town, a world-class town, probably the world's capital of gastronomy, gastronomic delights. A guy from Lyon would speak of Paris and food, and he'd say, "Paris c'est zéro." However, they were a large city, they had a lot of poor people, and they had showers for people to take showers who did not have a bathroom in their house with hot water. Well, you have been all looking to be a world-class power all these years, and now you have made it. You're a world-class power. Well, act like one. Thank you.
Thank you. A.J., to be followed by Barbara Sloan.
Let's talk recyclables. In 2012, I moved to Palo Alto. Back in those days, you could walk into any grocery store, and I mean any grocery store, and get as many free paper bags as you wanted, so long as you bought enough groceries to fill those bags. I used to take those paper bags, bring them home with me, and reuse them to hold my own recyclables as I was waiting for them to be collected. Now, that's what I call living green, reducing, reusing, and recycling. Fast forward to 2013. It is now impossible to find even a single free paper bag at Palo Alto grocery stores, and I'm quickly running out of paper bags to hold my recyclables. As a result, I'm left with only one option, to not recycle. Thank you.
Barbara Sloan, to be followed by Hete Sutin.
Hi, my name is Barbara Sloan, and I'm a native Palo Alton. And Palo Alto has had a long history of supporting the people of Burma, Myanmar. I know, I handed out a resolution, a Burma resolution, that was passed by the city, which I'm very proud of the city council for passing that. When they, you know, as you know, the government has changed substantially there now, and I noticed, I had very little time to prepare for this, but I noticed in Palo Alto Online that you're addressing neighbors abroad sister city issues. And I would like to propose that Tanji, which is a city in Myanmar, which is the same name, country as Burma, for, I'm sure you're aware of that, be considered as a possible sister city for Palo Alto. I, there's many reasons for this. And as I said, I didn't have time to put this together too well, but the selective purchase law and the Burma sanction bill and the, we've done a lot of emergency relief assistance there. And Stanford University, actually, there's a professor there, Professor Larry Diamond, and he's been in support of the democratic development there and the design for, and also many high-tech companies such as HP, Google are interested in getting involved in doing business in Burma. So I think, you know, given the high-tech angle that I noticed in the Palo Alto Online, getting linked, I think it was with Heidelberg, I was like in such a hurry to read this article that I went, oh, man, this is the time, the evening that we're going to be talking about neighbors abroad. So I would really like you to strongly consider that, you know, a city in Burma actually is a city of Tanji, which serves hill tribe people, ethnic minorities. I would like to suggest become a city, city, sister city of Palo Alto. And I've been involved with one of the hill tribes there, the Pa'ou people, for many years. So thank you for giving it some consideration.
Thank you. Hete Sutin. She's not going to speak. All right. Thank you. And that concludes oral communications. I need a motion on the consent count, on the minutes, approval of the minutes?
So moved. Second.
All right. If we could vote on the board?
With the correction.
With the correction. Yeah. There's a correction at places.
Correction on the June 10 minutes.
I, or Gail? Karen? And that passes unanimously. And now, if we could have a motion on the consent calendar? If we could vote on the board? And that passes unanimously. Moving on to our first item, do we have a adoption of a resolution allowing the implementation of a one-year trial of no overnight parking between 2:00 and 5:00 AM on streets within the Crescent Park neighborhood? If we could get a staff presentation? This is it, right?
Could just give us a moment, Mr. Mayor, to set up?
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, members of the council. I apologize for the keyboard throw there. I'm going to speak on the items tonight. My name is Jaime Rodriguez. I'm the chief transportation official for the city of Palo Alto. The item before us tonight is the consideration for an overnight parking resolution in the Crescent Park neighborhood or select streets of the Crescent Park neighborhood. As quick background, we were approached, the city was approached by several residents within the Crescent Park neighborhood, probably close to a year ago. At that time, residents within the Crescent Park were beginning to observe overcrowding of their streets close to Newell Road area, and that was coming from spillover parking from the adjacent multi-dwelling units that are in East Palo Alto on Woodland, on Woodland Drive. The complaints we were hearing from the residents about that time were overcrowding of the streets. A lot of people were observing their drivers being blocked in the mornings, late at nighttime, having a hard time getting out of their drivers or getting into their homes. And they were beginning to see a lot of litter, you know, within the, within the neighbors are picking up various types of trash within their neighborhood. So they approached us regarding those parking concerns as well as other traffic calming concerns within the neighborhood. Over the last year, we've been working with that neighborhood to implement a series of traffic calming measures to try and get cars just to slow down in general within Newell Road. And we'll be implementing some new striping in that area over the next couple of weeks. But the main concern was really was the issue of overcrowding from the parking in their neighborhood. And so at the time, we met with those neighborhood leaders and gave them various options. We really focused on a concept of trying to do a no overnight parking restriction, and we made it very clear to those residents that it would need to be something that was community-led. And so we asked the neighbors to consider, you know, circulating petitions, and we helped them by notifying the residents around them that people would be coming to their doors, asking to sign petitions. And we laid out a process that we would follow to implement those restrictions, which ends really with the city's council's consideration of this resolution this evening. And at the time... And at the time, when we worked with the residents to put together petitions, we really focused on a 10-block buffer around the western, in this case, eastern portion of the Crescent Park neighborhood, close to Woodland Drive, Edgewood Drive. And we identified 10 blocks on Edgewood, Newell, Hamilton, Dana, and Phillips, and the city provided the petitions that the residents would need to get signed and provided all the addresses that they would need to collect a signature from. Following the petitions, the city then administered a postcard survey that we sent out on our own, really to validate the signatures that people had signed. A lot of times, we find when we have traffic calming projects or parking projects that a lot of residents, you know, won't want to say no to their neighbor, specifically if they're at their door asking to sign a petition. And so we use these postcard surveys as the true mechanism to identify, measure, or vote. And very rarely, but there are times when we'll find that people sign a petition, but they voted a different way as part of the postcard survey. So we use the postcard survey as the mechanism to gauge community support for specific project. And right away, we found that there was a lot of strong support within the neighborhood on the street blocks that were surveyed. At the same time that we started the surveys, we started receiving requests from streets that weren't part of the original petition streets, requesting that they also could have an opportunity to participate in the survey. So what this slide here shows is the results of the streets that were initially petitioned and then postcard surveyed. And the streets in purple, again, Edgewood Drive, north and south of Newell, Phillips, and Hamilton, and Newell, all received 70% or more strong response from the postcard surveys. The only blocks that were surveyed that didn't show a strong support were the blocks of Dana, north and south of Newell Road. But again, we had petitions that we haven't, that we haven't sent postcard surveys for yet that do want to participate in the program. Those are shown here in yellow, and they include the southern portion of Edgewood Drive here, south of Jefferson, and Hamilton Drive, south of Madison. And so we've also received requests to have overnight parking on Madison Avenue, and these are now the streets that are dashed. And we did just receive last week, but it isn't here because we had already gone through and prepared these staff reports. Island Drive has outreach to us and asked that they be considered to be part of this program as well. So if we were to move forward the resolution, we would likely ask that you would consider adding Island Drive as well for those people that haven't now asked for that improvement. There was definitely some concern regarding the overnight parking restriction impacting residents, and that's what this specific one-year trial project would be. It'd be a no parking restriction for everybody, not just for people that are living outside the neighborhood or guests, it's for residents as well. And that was something that was made clear to the people when the residents, when they approached us, and that was clear on every petition, that was clear on every postcard survey, yet still the support was relatively high. But we did want to try and find some way to provide relief to people that needed, a need for overnight parking, if they were to have guests, if they had kids coming back from college, needed a place to park for a night. And we did come up with the concept of having an overnight permit, and that permit can be sold at a cost of $5 a permit. That's the same cost that we charge people within the college terrorist neighborhood for permits in their area, and so that's how we came up with that cost figure. Permits will be available here at City Hall, and people can buy as many permits as they wanted, and the permits are good for about two years at a time. So our recommendation, too, is to adopt the resolution authorizing us to implement a one-year trial for the no overnight parking, 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. program within the select blocks of Crescent Park, with considerations for the addition of Island Drive. If you have any questions, we have to answer.
Thank you. And now we'll go out to the public. We actually have a large number of speakers, so we'll have two minutes. The first speaker is Norma Jean Kelly, to be followed by Rachel Yankovic, or Richard Yankovic, sorry. Richard.
Hi, I'm Norma Jean Kelly. I live with my son and daughter-in-law on Edgewood Drive, and we do support the ban for no overnight parking. I speak for my son Douglas and my daughter-in-law Christine. I'm glad that you're going to have some type of permit available, because certainly I think that's important. That was a good consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Richard Yankovic to be followed by Leo Ware.
Good evening. My name is Richard Yankwich. I live at 1490 Edgewood Drive, two houses in from Newell. I'm here to support the trial overnight parking ban. The problem is insufficient parking provided by the apartments in East Palo Alto that's spilling over. The residents are choosing to come into the neighborhood. I'd do it, too, if I were them. But every night, I have four different cars in front of my house. I've canceled nonprofit meetings at my house because I have to tell them I don't have parking within five blocks during the evening. And you'll recall that a year ago, actually it was January, we approached the city council because this was a perfect example of something that required government assistance. This is not Palo Alto versus East Palo Alto. It's not us versus the drivers or us versus the parkers. It is a problem created by the fact that the apartment owners are not providing sufficient parking for their residents, and so they're coming over into our neighborhood, and they have no reason to pay attention to us. We're in a different county, a different city. We don't live there, and so we came to the council and said, "What do we do?" For the last year, we've worked with Jaime. We have walked the neighborhood. We've told people what's going on. We've talked to the daily news, the Mercury, all the papers. This is not a new issue, and what we were told to do is petition not for permits, but for the overnight parking ban. As you can see, it has been voted on by all the affected neighborhoods and has almost unanimous consent. I don't believe that this is a perfect solution, but it's a process that needs to get the right people to the table. Going to the landlord, going to meetings in East Palo Alto, even coming to this council did not get anyone's attention. Tonight, I think the overnight parking ban will. I don't know that that's the end, but that's why it's a trial, and I encourage you to pass it, and let's see what happens with neighbors, working with neighbors.
Thank you. Leo Ware to be followed by Frank Branson.
Good evening. I'm Leo Ware. My wife and I live at 1480 Edgewood Drive. Mr. Yankwich, my dear neighbor has stated the case well. There's little I can add, other than maybe to give you a grasp of what it's like. If you were there at 7:00 or 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night, the cars are not just parked casually, they're bumper-to-bumper, often intruding upon the driveways. And if you have to back out, as many of us do, you do it with considerable treachery awaiting you for your inability to see up or down the street. But once you've located yourself safely on the street and you're moving down Edgewood, it's even scarier with oncoming traffic. Why? Because these cars are not allowed to park. They're nice and decent about that. They don't park on the sidewalk. They're parking on the road. And when they do it on both sides, I can tell you, it's a scary experience to drive down there. The same is on Hamilton, and same problem is on Hamilton as it is in the other streets that are embraced within this proposed ordinance. And I agree with Rich. There's one effective way to get the attention of the people in East Palo Alto who, for whatever reason, I know not, have expressed considerable indifference over time to the problem that is theirs to solve, but which they have allowed us to accept. And that's to pass this ordinance tonight so that the good citizens of East Palo Alto can go to their leaders in their community and say, "Now, let's get addressed to the issue," which is your responsibility to do. I hope you will endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Branson.
My name is Frank Branson. I live at 1540 Edgewood Drive. My wife and I have lived at this address for 42 years. We're here tonight to support this resolution, and we share our neighbors' concerns about the inconvenience and aggravation of overcrowded parking in our neighborhood. We have an additional and more personal reason for supporting this. In July of 2012, our home was burglarized, and the home was ransacked. The burglar or burglars methodically went through our home, room by room, and ransacked our whole home. As you might imagine, our home was damaged, personal property was stolen. We felt violated, and it was an emotionally traumatic experience to go through, so severe to my wife that for many months, she was unable to leave the house, even run short-term errands, because she was worried that our house would be broken into again. Almost daily, there are one or two vehicles parked in front of our home. Often in the morning and at night, there are strangers sitting in these vehicles. That was the case this morning, when I got up. And we can't help but wonder if these unknown persons who we see almost daily, sitting in front of our home, are casing our home for a possible burglary, and this is very unsettling to us. We raised our family in this home, and we always felt safe and secure, and that feeling has left us. We feel that Crescent Park does not have to be a less pleasant or less safe place to live than the rest of Palo Alto. We hope that we can solve this issue and reestablish our, the character of our special neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Gumas to be followed by Herb Barak.
Mayor, council members, thank you for taking the time to consider this proposal. I've been a homeowner in Palo Alto for almost 20 years. My wife and I chose to purchase our home in a quiet residential location in Crescent Park, Duvernick area. Of course, we're attracted by the fantastic schools, the uncongested and quiet, traditional neighborhood character. Over the last several years, the neighborhood character has markedly changed due to influences extrinsic to the city of Palo Alto and the county of Santa Clara. Of course, I am referring to the influx of vehicles parking on our streets by non-residents, non-homeowners who reside in another city and in another county. Yes, there are problems with this. There is noise late at night and in the wee hours of the morning. There's trash and cigarette butts left in our yards. There are blocked driveways and access to our homes. In fact, at night, I often cringe if we're going out for dinner or to an evening out because when I return, I know that I'll have to park away from my own home and walk the blocks to get back to my property, since all the parking in front of my home is bumper-to-bumper But I do not believe it is the intent of the non-residents to cause these problems for us. I believe that the fault lies with the city of East Palo Alto and the investment groups who own the high-density apartment complexes that abut Palo Alto near the Newell Street Bridge. These entities have failed to provide adequate parking for the ever-increasing high-density populations to whom they eagerly rent to at ever-increasing rates. The city of East Palo Alto and the investment groups are profiting handsomely from the current arrangement, while bearing no cost in the problems they have created for their own residents and for the Palo Alto homeowners, namely inadequate parking facilities for the population they directly profit from. The city of Palo Alto, to the detriment of current Palo Alto citizens, has become the default high-density parking garage for the adjacent high-density housing complexes. Our neighborhoods are not high-density areas nor zoned as such. If the city of Palo Alto continues to provide this free parking service, there is no reason for this to change. I currently encourage the board, the council, to pass a resolution as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Barak to be followed by Jason White.
Mayor Sharp and council members, this is just one neighborhood that has concerns about parking in Palo Alto, so I wanted to step back and give you a little history of overnight parking issue within the city. Until 1982, overnight parking was prohibited unless someone had a hardship permit, and the police investigated to see whether a hardship permit was necessary. For example, from my own personal experience, if I, when I went in 1971 to get a hardship permit, the police came and saw that, yes, it was a one-car wide driveway, but it was a very long driveway, so four or six adults could park cars there, and no hardship permit. And in fact, it seemed to work very well, that we didn't have a problem of anybody inappropriately parking overnight in the streets of Palo Alto. However, in 1982, that section of the code was changed so that it was no longer about anybody parking in the early morning hours, but it was just things such as campers and cam trailers parking there. And what we then found is, despite the fact that the zoning code requires off-street parking for such things as single-family residences, if there's no, any kind of enforcement for people to actually park in that off-street parking, suddenly the residences, residents privatize the public parking on the street. It's one thing to complain about somebody else parking on the public street in front of your home. It's another thing if you are motivated by the city's ordinances to believe that you own that piece of property, public property, in front of your house. This is important because this neighborhood is easy to deal with. It's people from East Palo Alto. It's not downtown employees, but that's the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason White to be followed by Ben Ball.
Hi, thank you very much for taking the time to hear me out, and thank you for your support of this initiative. My wife and I moved to Crescent Park two, a little over two years ago. We live on Edgewood Drive at the corner of Phillips. And in those two-plus years that we've lived in the neighborhood, we have noticed the parking situation, for whatever reason, it's very hard to pinpoint, getting worse. The parking has come, was originally on Newell, has been moving down Edgewood, and now is moving down Phillips. It's actually turned the corner. And I think, I'd just like to take a minute to talk about a few of the side effects, which Jaime referred to, a few in his presentation, but just to articulate them a little further. We have noticed the non-residents parking on our streets late at night, early in the morning, taking trash and leaving it by their cars. On occasion, we've asked them to remove their trash, and we've found later in the day, the trash kicked under those cars. There's another side effect which hasn't been spoken about, which is, we have, our house has two curbs, one on Fields, one on Edgewood, and the street sweepers, which the city pays for, and I believe we pay with tax dollars for, never reach our curbs because Wednesday morning at 7:00 a.m., there are cars parked bumper-to-bumper along both sides of our house. We would like those leaves to be swept. We think that's, that's a helpful thing. And lastly, we love our home. We love our neighborhood. We are investing in our own home to make it beautiful, as we feel, or at least according to our standards. We're hopeful that, we don't understand why the city of East Palo Alto doesn't have parking for their residents, is forcing the cars over so that we, for days on hand, will often look at the same cars parked outside of our yard, and when we look out the windows of our home or when we approach our home, we have to see those cars repeatedly, day in, day out, only because the city and the property owners in East Palo Alto haven't provided appropriate parking for their citizens. But thank you.
Thank you. Ben Ball to be followed by Daniel Hanson.
My name is Ben Ball, and my wife and I have lived on Edgewood Drive for the last 17 years. Over the last three years, Edgewood Drive has been turned into, transformed from a quiet, single-family residential neighborhood into a parking lot. Today, over 90 non-resident cars park on Edgewood Drive and Newell Road every night. The neighborhood turning into a parking lot is a direct result of Equity Partners, the owner of approximately 80% of the apartments in East Palo Alto, directly across the Newell Road Bridge, significantly increasing rates for parking cars in their garages. As Jaime mentioned, I reached out to Jaime Rodriguez in October of 2012. Jaime and other members of city staff counted parked cars on our behalf in the neighborhood and confirmed the problem at that point in time. Since October of 2012, we have organized several neighborhood meetings where we polled residents around the best way to solve the problem. Simultaneously, we worked with Jaime Rodriguez and Jim Keen to understand the issues that were important to the city. Over the course of these discussions, we arrived at five overarching objectives. First, the solution had to be temporary and allow Equity Partners time to find a solution to the parking problem that it created. Second, the solution had to treat all parkers equally. We didn't draw a distinction between residents and non-residents. Third, the solution couldn't merely push the problem to other areas or other Palo Alto neighborhoods. Fourth, the solution had to have the support of over, of at least 70% of affected residents. And finally, the solution had to have the hope of keeping the streets open to everyone 24 hours a day in the long term. 24 hours a day in the long term. It has taken us nine months to find a solution that meets these objectives, and the temporary overnight parking ban accomplishes all of these goals. The program will be in effect for one year. It blocks everyone from parking overnight. It allows streets that don't currently experience parking problems to opt into the program if the problem moves their way. Well over 70% of the residents responded to the city's survey supporting the parking ban. The solution isn't perfect, but it meets the objectives defined by Palo Alto city staff and those of the Crescent Park residents. I strongly encourage you to support the overnight parking ban.
Thank you. Daniel Hansen to be followed by David Dorison.
Good evening. My name's Dan Hansen. I live on Edgewood Drive on the Creekside. We're down by Jefferson. My wife and two daughters and I have lived there 12 years. We're definitely very much in support of this overnight parking ban. We have seen the overcrowding of cars on the parking along the street, increased trash, there's reports of used condoms being laid around, urination. This really bothers me for my community. We've also noticed last couple of years, like Mr. Branson reported, increased crime, burglaries, robberies, my car's been broken into. In terms of who we're up against, just want to give you some details. This is Equity Residential. They own these apartments. They acquired them from Wells Fargo Bank in a foreclosure sale. This was in October 2011, which coincides when the trouble began. They are the largest apartment REIT, it's Real Estate Investment Trust in the United States, $2 billion in revenue, 4,000 employees. They're chaired by billionaire Sam Zell. They reportedly control over half of the low-income housing in East Palo Alto. They also own the Southwood Apartments in Midtown. They are a well-capitalized and powerful opponent that we are dealing with. The second thing that happened is East Palo Alto closed Woodland Avenue to all parking. That's the parallel street on the opposite side of the creek. That also led to this problem. Is it a perfect solution? No, it's a good temporary solution. We're not happy about the $5 a night for our guests that we have to deal with, and there is broad support in the local community. We'd prefer a residential parking permit, and we think that would be the best solution here, if we can get there. So we'd like you all to send the message to the billionaires in Chicago that Palo Alto is not their parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's David Dorison. I live on the 1400 block of Hamilton with my family. I'll keep my comments very brief. I think my neighbors have done a very good job so far laying out the experiences that they're having, and I just came here tonight to add my voice in support of this overnight parking ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Busan Gupta to be followed by Trish Mulvey.
Good evening. So I agree with the ban, although it comes at a sort of significant inconvenience for my extended family, but I think that's a small price to pay for basically what I consider to be the failure of the city of East Palo Alto. Now, and I think what will happen if the ban is passed is that the parking, the people that live in East Palo Alto have no other place to park. They will go further into Palo Alto to park because they really, they literally have no other option. So, and I think that what that leads us to is, I believe that the city council should basically work with the staff to start the discussion on a residential parking permit program for Crescent Park. Because the 10 blocks that we're going to potentially block off for overnight parking, the people are just going to park further. It's another 10-minute walk for the people to park somewhere else that doesn't have the ban. And so what we're doing is we're addressing the issue on the streets that are closest to the Newell Street Bridge. We are not addressing the issue that the people have to park and they will park further, and they'll have to walk. Or, some people have said, they actually do a shuttle. So one person will drive and drop the people off at their car. So if they have to drive a little further and drop people off further, that's what will happen. So I really want the city council to direct staff to start with, you know, the formulation for a residential parking permit for more than just the 10 blocks under consideration. And I think that it really also points up to the fact that the city of East Palo Alto is also complicit in this issue. It is their residents that do not have parking. They have to work with the stakeholders in East Palo Alto, and I don't think that they have done that. And I think this also leads to the issue, when we have to replace the Newell Street Bridge, we have to consider what kind of partner do we have across the bridge.
Trish Mulvey to be followed by Bruce Nixon.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Mr. Gupta too. East Palo Alto has become our affordable housing bedroom community. All Equity is doing is providing affordable housing for people that work in Palo Alto and in La Park. If you look at your map up there on the screen, there is no other place the folks in the Woodland Neighborhood can go. There's something like 30% of East Palo Alto lives on the west side of the creek. That's roughly 8,000 or 9,000 people, so roughly 4,000 or 5,000 people in that area. In my letter to you last week, I asked if you could please consider taking a time out to get the facts. I am very disappointed at the misinformation that you've been given tonight, and in my letter, I asked that I hope you would consider taking a time out to get the information about what East Palo Alto does know, what they're working on. I'm very disappointed that Mr. Keen isn't here to talk about his conversations with the East Palo Alto city manager. I understand their staff has requested that this action be deferred until after the 44-unit parking lot that Equity has conditional use permits for is built and see what happens. I'd ask that you wait until we have, and direct staff, to get the data so you can know if a parking ban is working. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, your message, your August message to the community about building bridges between communities just really touched me because I care a lot about it. This isn't how to, that, you're going to be having the same conversation later about sister cities. Can you, as our community leaders, help figure out how to build that kind of relation with our city across the creek? Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Nixon to be followed by Andrew Voit.
Thank you for letting me speak. I live on one of the affected areas, Hamilton Avenue, and I am totally in favor of the ban. I understand all the ramifications and why it is being proposed. The only thing I have a problem with is that my wife and I both work. I have four children who are high school, college, and even a bounce back. We don't have the ability to park at sometimes five cars. I don't think anyone, except maybe one of these huge homes, can do that. I think $5 a night is pretty high. When you multiply that by 365, that's $1,500 a year to park in front of my house. So I am in favor of a residential parking permit, or at least some kind of a long-term mitigated fee instead of $5 a night, which I'm not sure how logistically it's going to work. Now, had I known 20 years ago that this was going to come up, I might have reconsidered having the additional children. Anyway, I hope you consider a residential parking permit. Thank you.
Andrew Voit to be followed by Glenn Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf, and city council members, for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Andy Voit, and I live on Edgewood Drive. I've been speaking before the city council about the parking problem since January, so I'll cut to the chase. The overnight parking ban proposal is far from perfect, but it is much better than the situation today on the streets and is worth the trade-off. Let us try the solution proposed by staff. If the problem goes away, then we can let this temporary ban expire after one year. Please vote tonight to direct the implementation of the temporary overnight parking ban as developed over the past year by city staff. Please vote tonight to give the neighborhood relief and to exert pressure for a real, long-term solution. Thank you.
Vanessa Belland.
Hello, I live on the 500 block of Newell Road in the Crescent Park neighborhood. I'm here to ask for your support regarding the one-year trial period of a no overnight parking restriction from 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. We have a severe parking situation which is negatively affecting the neighborhood, and this overnight parking program will assist us. My neighbors and I overwhelmingly support this overnight parking restriction. We have shown our support for this measure multiple times via signed petitions and again with the mailed city surveys. We now ask you, as our elected officials, to support us, your constituents, by allowing the implementation of this no overnight parking resolution from 2:00 to 5:00 a.m. for a one-year period. Thank you for your time.
Glenn Campbell to be followed by Rob Zucker.
My name's Glenn Campbell. I'm a resident of the Equity Apartments. I know there's a parking problem. It seems to be the problem of the city of East Palo Alto. However, who's going to bear the brunt of punishment in getting this sorted out is the people who can least afford it. The reason the traffic is so heavy at 8:00 and 9:00 at night is because it's when most of these good people are getting off work. Most of my neighbors, most of whom look nothing like any of you, I might add, are good, hard-working, blue-collar people, trying hard to raise families in an environment we've created that require dual incomes just to keep above water. They don't have any place to put both of those cars. They're not the people who should be bearing the brunt of this. We should be dealing directly with the Equity Apartment owners. We should be looking to them for solutions requiring a certain amount of parking per density. And I understand that you all have very good reasons you can't be dealing directly with them. We all have reasons we can't get to the solution. But dealing with the symptoms rather than the actual problem is just governance by cowardice, and it's putting the brunt of the load in the wrong place on the people who can least afford it.
Thank you. Rob Zucker.
Hello, my name is Rob, and thank you for letting me speak. I wanted to say that this problem seemed to exasperate once the parking on Newell in between Edgewood and Woodland got taken out. There were at least 20 cars that could fit on there, and then those 20 cars started spreading out onto Edgewood Drive. If there were just lines painted on the road to get more vehicles in instead of cars parking further apart, we would fit more cars in. They could do the same thing in East Palo Alto by putting lines on the street, which is just a very simple thing that could easily fit in, say, another 20 cars. And then there's extra parking on Woodland that East Palo Alto doesn't allow people to park in. That's just free area. Say we fit in another 10 cars there. There's 50 of the 90 cars that the people were talking about earlier that could get off of Edgewood. As Mr. Gupta pointed out earlier, we're just simply pushing the problem further down the street. People are going to park there because they're not going to give up their cars. They're just going to park elsewhere. They're going to walk by the same neighborhoods. They're going to litter. They're going to do the same things, which unfortunately, they shouldn't do. Mr. Zuckerberg also lives on Edgewood. He throws parties all the time. There are hundreds of cars that end up at these parties, and they block all the good neighbors' parking as well, and that doesn't seem to be an issue. He's got ballet parkers out there. He's got a security guard that sits out there 24/7 in front of his house. And from the 2:00 to 5:00 o'clock ban, it's just going to mean people are going to show up at 2:00 a.m. in the morning to move their car, come back at 5:00, chirping with their buttons, making noise, which isn't going to be beneficial for anyone. It seems like the answer is just to try to find a better solution. Something simple like parking, drawing lines on the road would be good, and charging people $1,825 a year to park on the street when they're already paying taxes just doesn't seem right. So thank you very much for your time, and please don't adopt the ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Joya Zuccaro to be followed by Jane Kirchner.
Hi there, my name is Joya. I live in Stanford Garden Apartments, which is in East Palo Alto, and I'd like to apologize on behalf of all of us who live on the other side of the bridge for all of the things that we have done. And for the litter and the noise, I'm probably the biggest culprit because I park right in front of your houses, right on the other side of the bridge. Having said that, I also work at Stanford, as do many of my other neighbors, and you have a lot of people working at Stanford parking on your side of the bridge. So my point is, you all are actually making decisions about people who work in Palo Alto, people who work at Google. My neighbors in my apartment complex are developers at Google, post-docs at Stanford, I work in the School of Medicine. So we are not referring to people who you will never see again. We are actually referring to people who you could actually encounter on a regular basis. So it looks like you're going to probably pass the ban, and I understand that, but I would implore you to go ahead and work with those folks in East Palo Alto to come up with a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Kirchner to be followed by Stephanie Muñoz.
Good evening. I'm Jane Kirchner, and I'm a nine-year resident of Crescent Park, living at 1465 Edgewood, right between Newell and Island. On any given night, the entire friendage of my house is parked with cars from neighbors in East Palo Alto. After 8:00 in the evening, there are never any spaces in front of my house for me, my working husband, I also work, and my two working teenagers who work. So we're all working, thankfully, and we all have to park and drive and have places to put our cars. I just want to say that I want to encourage you to pass the temporary ban. It's not perfect, as everyone said. The staff in the city has been very creative. We were told to try to leave the resident parking program alone because it has a lot of complexity and issues associated with the downtown parking issue. And we're looking for some relief now. We're looking for some help, for some support for you guys, to help us send a message to the property owner in the city of East Palo Alto, to the city of East Palo Alto. And I guess I have to say that I apologize for this strong language, but people vote with their feet. The whole 44 parking spaces that Trish Mulvey has mentioned only came up as an issue. Mr. Keen spoke to me about those, and what happened was, the city manager of East Palo Alto and the developer had a conversation when they knew this was on the agenda, quickly called Mr. Keen and said, "Hey, we're going to, how about we come up with this idea of 44 spaces?" My recommendation is, we pass the ban, it's temporary, and we see if something changes. That's the only way that there's going to be any motivation to do anything real and anything meaningful for all of the working people in East Palo Alto and in Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Muñoz to be followed by Sarah Sinan.
Good evening, mayor and council members. As you may know, I spent many of the years of my life in San Francisco, as did my family, before we moved down the peninsula, and so I have some experience to share with you, hoping that it will be helpful. San Francisco has a parking arrangement that is, not only copes with too many parkers on the street at night, but also the tourists, which is not much of a problem in Palo Alto, certainly not in Crescent Park. If you park, I had friends who were next to a block from Ghirardelli Square, and the arrangement was that you had a certain number of hours that you could park on the street, nobody bothered you, but if you were not a resident with a resident permit parking, you had only those hours, and then you had to leave. And that would be ideal for college terrorists. Okay. The other things I wanted to suggest were that the police cars now have an ability to photograph license plates. That would be very helpful for people who are getting their houses robbed because the license plates that were in front of their house in the preceding week would be on file, and those people could be investigated. There was mention of a shuttle that takes people to homes in Palo Alto. At least for those people, the shuttle could take them to someplace in East Palo Alto where there is parking. And these are just little... And these are just little specks of helpfulness. And when, many years ago, we rented out a house in Palo Alto to students, and there was overnight parking, an overnight parking ban. I think that was the reason, we were the reason they had the overnight parking ban, because they thought there were too many students in the house. So, I'm very sympathetic. And may I say something? I would like to apologize to anybody last week who thought that people who were against a car dwellers ban were fighting the poor neighbors. I have nothing but sympathy, and most of it is sympathy for the neighbors who want the tone of their neighborhood to be fine. And the question that I have is, here you are worrying about getting people off the streets, and you can just pass the ban. But if you can just pass a ban so that people won't park on the streets in Crescent Park, for goodness sakes, why can't you just pass a ban in the evening so that homeless people and their cars won't park on those streets instead of telling them what they may do with their whole lives? It just seems strange.
Thank you, Ms. Muñoz.
Thank you.
Sarah Sanan, to be followed by Jeff Lewinsky.
Hi. My name is Sarah Sands. Thank you for your time. I'm in the support of this trial with the caveat that I live right at the edge on Hamilton Avenue, over Center Avenue, where it'll be the first free and available overnight parking on that side of the kind of block that this ban is being set upon. I'm hoping that this will not result in my house then being the first place to go because it's the first open area. And so, I'm really coming to the council to say I'm in support of the trial, but I may be back if it all ends up being on my side of the street. All right. Thank you.
Jeff Lewinsky.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I too live a few blocks from the bridge on Hamilton, and there's one aspect of the plan that does bother me and other people I've spoken to about it, and that's the requirement that 70% of neighbors have to buy into the plan on their block in order to have this approved. As you probably know, the very successful parking program in College Terrace requires only a 51% buy-in. And this issue came up at the meetings for the downtown residential permit parking program because it was proposed that that be 70% because of traffic calming, but in fact, everybody there was, that I heard and I remember, was for the 51% level. So, the first thing is that I think the 51% level, since we already have it in one part of Palo Alto, would be a fair policy to continue here. Secondly, I want to raise the concern that the staff report doesn't mention the 51%. It instead talks about the traffic calming, but I didn't see any mention of the 51%, which means that the policy is getting made by the staff report, not by the city council. And as you all know, this has been an issue that's been highlighted recently in The Weekly and has been a subject of much community conversation, that we want the staff reports to be fair. We want them to give you all the correct information so that you can make the policy choices. And I ask that you consider this issue tonight when you look at this ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And now we return to council for questions, comments, and motions. Councilmember Klein.
Well, let me start by saying that I very much appreciate the patience, attitude, thoroughness of the residents of the Crescent Park neighborhood. I think they've really been exemplary in how they've handled this. I should note that I lived in this neighborhood on Dana for about 10 years in the '70s and '80s, so I'm intimately familiar with the streets and how traffic used to move, which leads me to my first question, which is, I really find it intriguing that for years and years from the time I lived there through 2010, there really was no such problem, and suddenly there is. Suddenly, in government terms, anyway. Do we really have a good handle on, I've heard various explanations, but do we really have a good handle on why suddenly we had this dramatic increase in the number of cars parking in the Crescent Park streets?
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Some of the members in the audience, I think, really hit on the head that once the properties were picked up through the foreclosure process, you know, on the west--
I'm sorry, the what?
Once the properties were picked up by Equity Partners, the properties along Woodland Drive, that's really when the change happened because, to the credit of that developer, they invested in that community, they invested in those homes, and they immediately started to market them. And they really marketed it as more of a corporate-style type of a dwelling unit. And you heard comments tonight about people that are living there being, you know, from different parts of the community. People working at Google, people working at Stanford. And so, they're just more attractive now to people that are looking to find a place to dwell. And in general, vacancy rates within Central County are extremely low, and so, once people find a place, they jump on that opportunity to get a home specifically within this area. And so, the level of congestion really is night and day from the time that Equity Partners purchased those properties.
I believe they have not increased the number of units. Is that correct?
That is correct. Aaron Acton, interim planning director. Also, I'd like to add, there's a couple of things. I think Jaime touched on higher occupancy rates. I think they've had a more successful marketing strategy, so more units are online and occupied. They also started charging per parking and decoupling the price of parking from the actual rent of the unit, which obviously discourages people from using that parking if they can't afford it.
Have we checked whether the parking spaces at these units are fully used?
It's our understanding that there are, most of the areas, they are fully used, although there are some apartments that are being rehabbed right now, where those, because they own a number of different apartment buildings, some that are being rehabbed, that parking area is not being used.
And which gets me to a broader question. Have we had any discussions with the owners of these units?
Staff has not had direct conversations with the owners of the units. We have, the city manager, as well as myself, has had conversations with the East Palo Alto city manager, who has had conversations with the property owners about what their short-term as well as long-term plans are to meet parking demand.
And the results of those discussions?
The results are, in the short term, they're looking to bring two off-site parking lots online around the area. One of them would have, I believe, 46 spaces, and the other one would have 42 spaces. And the timing of those are mid-November, that both of those parking lots will be available for the residents. Yeah, it's our understanding they would still charge for those, though, as currently proposed.
And do you know what the charge would be?
I don't know the exact charge. No.
And do we know whether these actions are just being talked about, or are they official?
I believe they're official. My understanding is that there was actually, they had obtained some type of use permit through their planning commission for off-site parking.
And to go back one step, the way these units were originally developed, were there sufficient parking spaces, or do we know the ratios as compared to what we require?
Jaime mentioned to me that it was one space per unit. So, a lot of times what you see is these units that were, you know, when they were built decades ago, there was an expectation that a certain amount of people would live in each unit, but now there's just more crowding in each unit, which causes a parking issue.
So, if these 88 units are built, excuse me, if 88 spaces are created, we think that would solve the problem?
I can't say whether it would solve the problem in its entirety, but--
How many spaces were there? Did we count? In the neighborhood? Thank you, Councilmember Klein. We counted cars at various times, and when the issue first came alive, we were counting about maybe 40 cars. If I had to guesstimate now, I'd probably say we're probably seeing closer to about 80, 80 cars parked within the neighborhood. And so, even the numbers seem to balance, but the two lots are on different parts of the East Palo Alto neighborhood. So, one of the lots, I understand, is closer to, say, the Newell Street Bridge, and the other one is, I think, closer to West Bay Shore.
Okay. Well, is this part of the reasoning, by this I mean the development of these 88 spaces, is this part of the reason you're recommending a one-year term for this overnight parking ban?
I wouldn't say it's the primary reason. I think the primary reason is, A, to see how it works, and then, B, to let us develop policies related to residential permit parking programs, both for, potentially for this neighborhood and for neighborhoods around Palo Alto. I think we're just starting that discussion with other neighborhoods, and we want to continue that discussion with this neighborhood as well. But since there's an immediate problem in front of us, we thought this was the best short-term solution to give it a try.
What's our timetable on the residential parking permit program?
I think it's something that we could bring forward, number one, an overall policy to the planning commission, to the council over the next couple of months, and something that we could continue the conversation with this particular neighborhood within the next couple of months as well. We've actually had more conversations with this neighborhood, as well as the downtown neighborhoods, about this, so it wouldn't be something that's that far off.
I will move the staff recommendation.
That's second by Councilmember Ness. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly, since I think that my views were sort of reflected in the questions. But I think that we do need to take some action. I think the neighborhood, as I said, has been patient. I think that we do need to take some steps that will really make clear that this is not an acceptable solution for Palo Alto, and I think that this is the way to not only help our residents, but also to send a message to the owner of the apartment buildings and the municipal government of East Palo Alto that we need to really move forward on this, that we have to change the status quo. So, for those reasons, I'm in favor of the staff recommendation and the motion, and hope that the 88 spaces will clear things up, but if not, that we'll have other results that will be beneficial to the neighborhood. And as to the idea that this might be a whack-a-mole situation, that we could just be moving the problem to the next neighborhood further away, I think that's, at least in theory, definitely a problem, and that we'll have to see where we are a year from now. There is limits, there are limits, I should say, to how far people will move, will walk to park their cars, and I don't know what that is, but I think we saw it in College Terrace, that when we instituted the residential parking permit program there, that the people who were displaced, presumably workers and students at Stanford, they have not invaded the adjacent neighborhoods on the other side of El Camino. So, one can be at least mildly optimistic, but I think we'll have to wait and see. Thank you.
Councilmember Ness, would you like to speak to your second?
I would. Thank you. And I'd first reflect Councilmember Klein's thank you, and I would say, yes, indeed, you have been very patient. I've heard from a number of you, both formally and informally, so I am very pleased this has come forward tonight. The only thing that I would say that's at all negative about it is I'm troubled about the $5 charge, and perhaps staff could speak to that after I'm done speaking to my second, because I think that sets a precedent. I frankly would wipe that out and continue on with it as part of what we're doing in order to make it easier on this neighborhood. My only concern about this, and I will look at Councilmember Klein at the same time, is that we have been hearing from any other number of neighborhoods regarding their parking problem. And I have a feeling that after tonight, I'm going to hear from all those neighborhoods again who have said, "You have solved one problem in Crescent Park, another problem in College Terrace. We're still out here." So, I want to at least say, for those who may be listening tonight, we do need to pay attention to that as well. It's difficult, because we know that people are coming into the community, whether or not they work at a restaurant, or whether or not they work at a high-tech company. Parking in our community has become an overwhelming problem. We're dealing with one of the problems tonight, and I'm pleased to support this, but I am very concerned that the patience of the rest of our community is also being tried at the same time. I certainly wouldn't call anyone out, but I hope somebody is here from East Palo Alto tonight who is either in a governing or in an administrative position that is listening. I don't know if they are or not, but it would be good for us to know that later. I wouldn't call anyone out at the moment, but I think it's important for our neighbors to know that we're dealing with this problem. I would also reflect that I know that in the apartment business, it now is not uncommon to charge for parking places. So, I don't know how we come up against that, but I have certainly heard that as well. I was sympathetic with the people who spoke, who said they are part of the working population that comes into Palo Alto every day. However, at the same time, I think we are looking at, as the woman said, at those who actually vote with their feet, and I'm very concerned that we serve our neighbors and our neighborhoods well. So, with that, I am pleased to support the motion, but I do want to ask about the $5 charge. I would suggest that be eliminated, but I think it is a part of your motion, Mr. Klein. Am I correct?
Yes, it is. I want to leave that in there, but I thank you for raising the point, because I was concerned and use this as an excuse to wonder whether we can't do this online rather than requiring people to come to City Hall. That seems to me to be an unnecessary burden.
Thank you, both. I'll first address the $5 issue. We use the $5 because that's the same cost that we have for guest permits in previous programs. I would say if we did lower it, let's at least lower it to the amount to at least cover some administrative and printing costs, which, you know, could be a dollar or $2. I would have to check and see if we have the online capabilities. I don't know that offhand, but we certainly could move towards that model if it's available.
So, if Councilmember Klein were willing to at least have that as a discussion before this actually goes into place, I would be concerned if this means that our resident needs to come to City Hall each time someone wants to park, or can I buy these, you know, several at a time? How would I go about getting my permit so my daughter can park overnight?
Thank you, Councilmember Ness. Just to clarify, the cost of printing the permits are just under $1 each, so about a $1 cost would cover the cost of that administration and the printing. And the way that we sell them here at the Revenue Collection Center, you can buy as many permits as you would need at any time. You don't need to come in and buy just one at a time. And I have to go with Aaron, I have to double-check the status of our online program. The intent of the system is to allow people to just buy things online and not have to come into City Hall. I just have to check if it's available a lot for these kind of guest night permits. We had been setting it up for permits for the downtown, for employee parking. I just don't remember the status of the program for resident overnight permits.
Rather than alter the motion substantially tonight, if you could come back to us with what I think might be a better way for the residents in that area, and as we have just said, this may end up expanding. I do think people are willing, certainly, to walk to Dana and maybe further, and I wouldn't be surprised if we're back in a month with people saying, "We want to be part of this." So, thank you.
Councilmember Price.
Thank you. I will be supporting this. I have a couple of clarifying questions. Should we assume, then, if this does pass, that you will be directly communicating with Equity Partners, the city manager, and the mayor of East Palo Alto?
Yes, we could do that.
Okay. And the other question is, on the residential parking permits program, could you update us at this moment on your current schedule to address that broader issue, although it may be at this point in other parts of town?
So, thank you, Councilmember Price. So, we've had several outreach meetings, primarily for the downtown area, both with residents north and south of downtown and commercial property owners. We're scheduled to have the next neighborhood meeting in early September, and following that, we'll be bringing forward the first proposal for an RPP program within the downtown area in the September timeframe to the planning commission and then to the council. And I think once we develop a program and the parameters for a program in the downtown area, we could-- area, we could transfer some of those same guidelines to other neighborhoods that might be requesting the same thing.
Thank you. That was my concern, because I think we're getting a sense here, reading the public and getting a sense of these parking issues that keep emerging, the importance of accelerating this work. I won't make a friendly amendment to the motion, but you are working on that in a deliberate way. The other issue is on the fee, within your calculation of costs, is part of that enforcement required, as part of your assessment of the $5 fee, proposed fee?
Thank you, Councilmember Price. Again, the $5 fee came from a previous program. The way we had talked about doing this was, at the beginning, after the implementation of the signage for the program, that we do warning, or Police Department was going to give warnings before they gave actual citations. It would be more responsive as people called in, so there wasn't a specific enforcement program outlined, as part of the trial, it was going to be reactionary towards input from the community.
So are you saying that people will be warned, or will they be receiving some kind of citation if they don't have a permit?
The first two weeks-
Overnight permit?
The first two weeks would be warnings, because we'd want to give people that opportunity to know that you need to find some other alternative to people to park with this specific neighborhood. But after two weeks, in this case, around the middle of September, then the Police Department would begin to issue actual citations.
Okay, thank you. And the last question is, on your analysis of this program, I don't know what methodology you will use exactly regarding this potential spillover impact of this ban into adjacent streets. Will that be part of your analysis, if you can actually do that?
Yes, Councilmember Price. What we specifically do after we implement the program is go back out and actually count cars. We were, I was actually coming in around 6:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning, and counting cars on the street. We would do the same thing, but we counted at a broader net, to see if there was, in fact, any type of spillover onto an adjacent street.
Great, because I think what people fear may be a reality. Okay, thank you. I appreciate your staff work.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes, thank you. I have just a few quick questions here, and then a couple comments. The 51 versus 70%, that wasn't included in the staff report as comparison. Why was that not included? And the information about the parking lots coming online in East Palo Alto also wasn't included in the staff report, so I was just curious why those weren't included.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. On the 51 versus 70%, the reason why it wasn't referenced within the staff report is because we were treating this as probably more of a traffic calming type of program, and when we look at our traffic calming guidelines, we typically use 70% as the threshold for when we're measuring the public through our postal surveys. So for example, if this was a project where someone was requesting speed humps or speed tables on their street, the postal surveys would actually gauge at 70%. So that's why we use that number over a different number. In the kind of draft guidelines that we had prepared for residential permit parking programs that we considered last fall, we had shown 51% as the guideline for parking, but it isn't what we were implementing here, so we were treating this as a traffic calming project.
I'm not quite sure why I think of this as a traffic calming as opposed to a parking issue. And the parking lots in East Palo Alto not coming online, those also weren't referenced in the staff report?
This is, thank you, Councilmember Holman, this staff report is very similar to the one that went last week, and we didn't include it in the first one, because we didn't actually know that exact information then. So it was just an oversight, and not putting that information back in in between this week after it was continued.
So is, thank you for that. The conversations that have happened between city managers, Palo Alto and East Palo Alto, has one of the questions come up, is it legal in East Palo Alto to charge separately for parking places separate from the dwelling unit itself?
That question has not come up. We can bring that up. I know it is a common practice, as a council member noted. However, I've seen it more of a common practice near transit stations than when you're completely detached from transit, as an incentive for people to actually take. But it's a bit unusual when you, when there's no other option than driving your car, when you have more of an isolated environment. So that's something, from a policy standpoint, we should bring up with the East Palo Alto city manager.
Seems like that would be a prudent question for not only this project, but for future projects too, because it's a policy matter, and, you know, depending on what the permits were for the project when it was built, there's probably something that travels with that approval process. The 2:00 to 5:00, the 2:00 to 5:00 a.m., trying to make even more lemonade out of this, is it possible that the street sweeping could happen in those hours, because it's a benefit to help keeping our storm drains cleared? Could the street sweeping happen, then? Because we all know, it's like when, if you can't sweep the streets along the curb, then all that stuff ends up in the drains, so.
Yes, Councilmember Holman, we can look into that issue, and just get some input from our Public Works Department regarding noise generation that late at nighttime, and we may report back to you separately.
Okay, thank you. Having to do with the permits being too low, I appreciate the comments of colleagues about $5 maybe being a little high, but if they're too low, aren't we just going to have like a, almost a de facto pay-as-you-go, $30 a month for a parking place in front of your house? I mean, I kind of worry about having a balance, having a balance of those two effects.
That could be the case. I think that's one of the things that we would have to monitor during this one-year trial, and see, you know, how, if that pricing works or not. Hopefully, you know, we do progress towards some type of RPP program, where it's more of a set fee, you know, for vehicles out there, rather than a per night. So, once again, this is just a trial, but I agree, the pricing of it is a difficult thing to gauge, and not something we can give you a straight answer tonight, but something we would have to monitor.
Okay, thank you. And then, pretty much lastly, I'm hoping that staff will reach out to our East Palo Alto neighbors, property owners, and government officials, and let them know of the action that this council is taking tonight, so people don't just all of a sudden get a notice on their windshield, which might not be received too pleasantly, I know it might not be. And then, just to address some of the other things about this being perhaps punitive, it really is a bit of a hardship on everybody, because the property owners that live here have become accustomed to parking in front of their homes. And when I moved to Palo Alto in 1976, eons ago, you couldn't park on the street overnight. So we enjoyed having clear streets and sidewalks at night, and the streets were swept during the night, and the streets and the gutters and all were very clean. So I don't know where this will lead us in the longer term, but I will support this going forward tonight. But one last thing is, I'm hoping that the dash line map is going to be what travels with this ordinance, and a reminder again for staff that all these charts and graphs and maps, everything, have to convert to black and white. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Shepard?
Yeah, thank you. And I just have a couple of questions. I will be supporting this tonight, but I'm very sad to see this come forward. I think that, just a quick statement, this is not going to be the end of Equity Residential for the city of Palo Alto. It's my understanding that they purchased, under foreclosure, 1,800 units, over 1,800 units, all west side of the freeway in East Palo Alto, and it's devastating and destabilizing the community over there. And I think that we need to do a very firm reach-out, so that we can stay connected while they pursue their, as you put it, investment in this community. They have different zoning changes, I'm not sure they have the same height limit that we have, and I think it's really important that this, that we begin that dialogue in a constructive way, so that we can take care of how people live on both sides of that particular segment of our community, both sides of the creek. This is also, when this acquisition happened, it was considered 20% of the lowest-income housing in San Mateo County, which is quite a shock of transfer of ownership, under some very, you know, great deals. So I had a question, why is there no more parking on Woodland? What happened with that, and is it possible to reverse that?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Shepard. We can definitely check in with East Palo Alto staff. My understanding is that they did have a lot of concern, impacts with the creek flooding last, this past winter, they did have parts of their creek that actually flooded back into the embankments, and so they did restrict portions of the parking for safety reasons. They also did, just in general, have to follow their own kind of federal and city guidelines that we have to follow for parking, which would require certain widths of streets for parking, and those just can't be satisfied along portions of Woodland Drive.
Well, I can understand that happening during the event of, you know, catastrophic weather, but during the rest of the portion of the year, it seems like that would be much more attractive to me. If I lived there, I would rather park close to where I lived, and not far and deep and away, because that's just wasted time for me to get home, and to have my relaxation and comfort of my home. So I would, I was wondering if you could reach out and figure out if there's a way that we could have that be more fungible throughout the year. Also, I'm concerned about the decoupling of the space in the unit that goes to rent. Seems to me that we are very careful in Palo Alto, and I know that we're having this experience in Palo Alto as well, where people are choosing to park on the street than pay the extra, at least I hear it anecdotally. So I wanted to know if there are ordinances that the state might be looking at to not allow people to, you know, invent additional income for their apartments, because we are really careful with that ratio of parking and residence, and commercial and parking. Parking is always one of the components as to how big you get to have your project, and if they're decoupling it, that concerns me.
Just to clarify one thing, then, Jaime just put a note down, is that each unit does get a space, the difference is that the two-bedroom units used to be able to get two spaces, and now one of those spaces they have to pay for, so it was a partial decoupling of overall rent.
But it would be, if we were doing an apartment project right now, and approving an apartment complex, wouldn't we be looking at these parking spaces versus the square footage, and the bedrooms, and all that sort of stuff? Is that not part of the considerations of a city council when they're approving a project, or an ordinance, or the zoning, just the zoning? Why is it that it can deviate from those types of approvals?
No, absolutely. I mean, usually, you know, you, the way cities go about their ordinances, you build a two-bedroom apartment, you must have two parking spaces. Before, it was standard practice, up until the last few years, that it would just be part of the overall rent. So I just think it's a thing where law hasn't caught up to how the market is doing it right now in certain circumstances. I think the major difference is here, sometimes that does work, when you're closer to transit, and there isn't an ample free parking supply nearby.
This is not close to-
But this is not that situation, so that's why it's not working.
Well, so I guess I'm curious as to whether or not there's any legal recourse we can do, not just to, I'm not saying let's sue East Palo Alto for not enforcing that, that's not what I'm trying to say, I'm just saying, how is it that we can do that, not only there, but for our own, if they come forward, our own issues of having people park on the street instead of going into a garage, that is then not used, fully utilized, you know, by the tenants? And so that concerns me a lot. So just following up on the parking on Woodland, and making, seeing if there's a way you can open up spaces right away, I cannot imagine, now, the two projects, the 46 and the 42, parking spaces, that's just a flat space, it's not a parking garage, is that correct?
That's our understanding, correct.
Okay, and so is it potentially a build project for another complex at some point, or we don't know, is that correct?
Yeah, we don't know. It's the way that it was, the details were given to us, that it's just a parking lot, and there were no long-term plans for anything other than parking on those lots.
Well, I think that this is something that actually Palo Alto and East Palo Alto shares, trying to figure out how to make sure that people park their residences and their tenants in their own parking space, so that people can have the quality of life that they deserve as renting an apartment building, renting in a building, that they don't have to spend 15, 20, or 30 minutes walking home from work when they're tired, or going to work in the morning. That seems to me it's robbing time. So, thank you.
Councilmember Berman?
Thank you. So Councilmember Price had asked about whether or not we'll be analyzing the impact of spillover once the overnight parking ban goes into effect. Am I safe to assume that we've already done a kind of baseline analysis of those streets outside of the ban area, to make sure that we have a point of comparison for once the ban takes place? Or that we will, by the end of August, have that analysis done?
Thank you, Councilmember Berman. Definitely by the end of August, we'll have an expanded footprint.
Perfect, great. So I've developed a bit of a reputation over the past couple of months for my field research that I've done on issues, in particular in regards to Maybell. But the first bit of field research I ever did was in regards to this issue, which came up in, I think, January or February, right after I got sworn in, and we were getting emails about the parking around Edgewood and Newell, and I thought that the emails seemed a little over-exaggerated. And so I went out at midnight on a Wednesday night, I think it was after a committee meeting or something like that, and counted cars, and I think, you know, this was back in January or February, but I think I counted to about 63. I haven't gone back and looked at my notes, and it sounds like it's probably gotten worse since then. And it was pretty stark, you know, I was coming from, I live downtown, and I was coming from downtown, driving down, or Hamilton, and then over to Edgewood, and there was, in regards to kind of where is this parking coming from, there was very light parking, very light residential parking, very light residential parking, and then bumper to bumper. I mean, it really is kind of as the residents have described it. And so I want to, you know, acknowledge that there definitely is a problem there. It definitely is something that I think is directly tied to the apartment problem in East Palo Alto, and I think, you know, the residents have worked very well with the city to try to address the issue and come up with a temporary solution. I hope that we don't get to a residential permit parking solution, though. You know, I really do kind of sympathize and agree with the comments that were made with the young woman who had the UCSB sweatshirt on, in regards to, you know, A, the people who live over there. I have friends who live in this neighborhood, including one good friend, who I grew up with in Crescent Park, and now, as a, you know, starting a young family and working for a tech company that used to be in Palo Alto, but now is in Los Altos. You know, he moved to East Palo Alto because it was much more affordable. And I do know, as Councilwoman Niss alluded to, that we do have colleagues from the East Palo Alto City Council in the audience, and friends of mine, and I think, you know, I've done a poor job of reaching out to them, to talk with them about this issue, and I'm going to do a better job of reaching out to them, to talk with them about this issue over the next couple of months, in the hopes that we are able to actually find a solution to the problem, as another gentleman mentioned, rather than, you know, constantly having to deal with the symptoms. So I'm going to support the temporary ban, I'm going to hope we don't have to make it a permanent ban. I'm going to do all I can to work with my friends on the East Palo Alto City Council to try to make that happen, and hopefully we won't see people again. So, thanks.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, just a couple of comments on the process of how we got here. Points have been made by my colleagues, but the two that strike me is the 70% vote, and the way the numbers come out. The Hamilton Avenue vote was exactly 70%, as I counted, if one person had changed their mind, it would not have passed. Now, the 70% is not quite an arbitrary number, but it becomes very important where you stop counting, whether it be in the middle of the street, or one side of the street, and, you know, that becomes a political issue. So how are you going to deal with that in the future, as you do this in other neighborhoods? Where do you draw the line?
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. I think that, in terms of the 70%, you know, that's something for traffic calming measures, as Jaime explained, we use to inform the staff recommendation. I think the best thing moving forward for any residential permit parking program is that we put the percentages there, in front of the commission, in front of the council, to make their own determinations. Since we use College Terrace for a residential permit parking program, we use 51%, I think that would be a fine percentage to use for other RPP- that would be a fine percentage to use for other RPP programs. I think that's, I think that's fine as well. But I think more so is just being able to put the information in front of the council in order for you to, you all to make the decision is the important thing.
Yeah, I guess my point is, how you define a block becomes very important, especially as you reach the periphery of the affected area. The other question, we've been talking about EPA, but I guess I'd like to focus on the Palo Alto side. Palo Alto has issues all over town about parking, parking intrusion. Part of that is in areas where commercial density is going up. Part of it is in areas where housing density has gone up. Now, I assume that the rules that we're using tonight will also be used in these other neighborhoods. So is that a principle we are, can expect to see?
Well, there's two different things. So this isn't a residential permit parking, you know, program that we're proposing now. So the rules might be slightly different. And I think overall, you know, we've only had, you know, I think we have to look to develop our policy for residential permit parking, and that's something that's relatively new for Palo Alto, and it's coming along.
Oh, I guess I was referring to the emergency ordinance of no overnight parking. Groups of neighbors could say, give me the same thing.
Yeah, we haven't come across any other neighborhood at this point that's requesting an overnight parking ban, mostly, and everything's been focused on residential permit parking, primarily related to commercial intrusion into residential neighborhoods. So since this was the only one that was coming about with this one particular problem, that's why we're treating this separately and bringing it forward now.
Yeah, I guess others will hear. The last issue that has been brought up is EPA's parking ratios aren't quite working. It raises the question, though, is in parts of town, is our ratios of either dense commercial development or dense housing development, are they working? Is it appropriate time to have an assessment of our parking ratios, especially in areas of town where density is growing? And as people pointed out, part of the change has been a mix, so that the EPA apartments are looking more like Palo Alto apartments. In other words, heavier use by professionals who have more cars.
I think the answer is yes. And during the downtown development cap process, that's going to be one of, if not the most, you know, one of the most critical things that we look at. A, how are office spaces being used nowadays versus how they were, and how does that affect the parking ratios? And the same goes for housing as well.
And that will be soon, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burt.
Okay, first question, there was a concern over the notification of folks that this new regulation would come in play. It was my understanding that the signage would go up prior to any implementation, and that would mean several weeks prior to actual enforcement, is that correct?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. The plan would actually be to actually sign all the streets that would participate in the program over the next probably two and a half to three weeks. So it actually happened relatively quickly.
So it is correct? Okay, good. All right, I'm trying to move through this pretty quickly. Second, I understand that our staff is, for a good number of months, been trying to work on collaborative solutions with the City of East Palo Alto on this, and, and so I think there were some statements that were basically saying, why don't you talk with them? And my understanding is you have been talking extensively for a long period of time, is that correct also?
Yes, Councilmember, that's correct.
Okay. And as you stated earlier, unfortunately, it's only when we're now finally having to take an action that we're seeing that, in particular, the property owner, Equity Partners is, or Properties, is now looking at really taking some action. And I think that when their clients finally are being squeezed out, and we're no longer in overflow, then they have a greater incentive to try and solve the problem as a property owner. And hopefully, that will occur more quickly. But the one area that we might be able to encourage greater reconsideration by East Palo Alto, and I want to acknowledge that a lot of our comments have been acting almost as if we have some jurisdictional authority in what East Palo Alto does. And they determine their own regulations, and we try and work collaboratively, but they, they have all their own decision-making authority to choose to do what they think is correct. But the parking that had been on Woodland, seems like that could be a stopgap measure, at least until these new off-street lots are created. I would like to encourage our staff to discuss that with the East Palo Alto staff and see if that, that could help mitigate some of the near-term impacts. I would also like to say, just on this whole issue of supermajorities and on the blocks. First, I think it is appropriate to have a supermajority to opt in, but I don't think this is a traffic calming measure. I think that's disingenuous to characterize it as that. This is a parking thing. And if, if staff believes that 70% is a right supermajority for a parking issue, then we should say that. We shouldn't call it something else, that's just not true. But I would support it. I think that for, it's, we have a supermajority like that when we have a single-story overlay. I think when, when you're going to have that kind of restriction, it is appropriate to have that. And the, the other thing that I just wanted to ask staff is, do you think there is any need for a staff discretion on being able to grant hardship permits? That would be like a monthly permit if you found, and I, this neighborhood generally has off-street parking, so maybe it's, it just is a moot point. But I would be completely open to giving staff that discretion as this gets expanded if, if there was any anticipation that there might be a need for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. At this point, I would, we haven't heard that concern, but since this is a trial program, but what I would say is, if we do start to hear it, we could bring that back to the council for consideration, potentially on consent. I think if we have, you know, right now, that if people had a hardship, they can buy those guest permits overnight and do that for the time being.
Okay, and it seems that, I mean, we could either incorporate that latitude for you tonight, or if you think it's simple enough as a consent item, but, but, you know, if it's a latitude that you would like to have in your hip pocket and don't want to go half, through the pain of a staff report even to put it on consent, then I would support adding it to the motion.
At this point, I, I wouldn't recommend that, only because I would want to think through the criteria for hardship before we put something forward.
So that's fine with me. My concept was to leave the criteria to staff discretion and not have to come to council. But if you don't think you need it, okay. Finally, I just did want to get a clarification, because I had heard that since Equity started charging, there were unused spots, and that that was one of the issues. And I thought you and Jaime had said that, to your knowledge, there aren't a bunch of vacant spots. If that's the case, then the charging is not really a cause for the overflow. Because if they're used up, it's not going to matter whether you charge or don't charge if there aren't more spaces. I mean, it's really, that's an East Palo Alto and Equity issue, but I, it just, it didn't make sense to me.
I wouldn't, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure whether or not they're all full, and I'm not 100% sure if there's empty spaces. So it's something we'd have to go out and do some field work.
Okay, I'll leave it at that. I just wanted to kind of get the record straight. Thanks.
So I had a couple of questions on that as well. This really seemed to arrive in 2011, right, as an issue? Is that what we're hearing? And that was with Equity taking it over?
I think more in the 2012 timeframe, once they, they had taken it over and implemented some of their policies.
Because one of the things that it did strike me is that, I do recall the previous owner before Wells Fargo, they were trying to raise rents, and there was all this in the paper, and then they lost it in foreclosure. And one of the interesting things is, East Palo Alto has some form of rent control, and if you decouple the parking charge and you can charge for that, you're really doing an end run around the rent control, which would, you know, lead, this would seem like a perfect example, is that if you had rent control and then you charged separately for parking, you took away people's second parking spot, this is what you would get. So, I mean, I was just wondering if that had anything to do with it. It sort of seems that that could be. And then I actually had some concern, I think, that, that Councilmember Burt and Councilmember, and Councilmember Niss raised. You know, we heard from the gentleman who has four kids, and I have some sympathy for that. I mean, I have teenage drivers, too. I don't know what I would do if this was imposed on my street. So I sort of like Councilmember Burt's concept of giving you some discretion, frankly, and to deal with, you know, with these individual issues in the trial. I mean, you know, you do a really good job, Aaron, as, looking at this stuff, and I think there's a lot of issues that people may have that, you know, we haven't really resolved. So, you know, unless staff has a real problem with it, I'd like to move Councilmember Burt's suggestion that we incorporate some discretion for you to be able to say, you can get a 30-day permit, you know, and we don't know what the price is up for them, or maybe it's a 15-day permit, but.
A hardship.
And I'm not even sure it's a hardship. I mean, I don't want to define, I want to sort of leave that up to staff in what that means. I mean, if you have, you know, if you have four kids who want to drive, or you have one kid who wants to drive, and you don't have, are we actually going to send someone out and say, we got to check the driveway, like, you know, Bob Moss suggested earlier? So I would suggest that we go ahead and give staff some discretion to grant permits longer than a day, if they feel it's necessary, given the facts and circumstances.
If I may.
Mayor Scharf.
Yeah, that was a motion.
Mayor Scharf.
Yeah.
If I may.
Sure.
This item comes before the council under procedures that are set in state law that require this type of a program to be authorized by ordinance or resolution. And under those circumstances, there is an issue with setting up the staff discretion. It needs to be done carefully, and it does need to be bounded. So that is maybe part of the reason why that was not set up this way, in addition to, you know, the staff commenting that there are some issues to think through in terms of a policy. So I think Acting Director Agnew has an alternative suggestion that may accomplish some of your interests.
Sure. I think, thank you. For the time being, I would, I would recommend that we just lower the price of that overnight permit, which would essentially, you know, do the same thing. If we lowered it to, you know, a dollar a night, $2 a night, that would give some leeway in the time being.
Yeah, I actually wasn't really wild on that idea. I actually preferred the notion that if it is a question of bounding it, I was just going to suggest then that you go ahead, and if there is an issue that you see and neighbors come to you and say, we'd like this, that you go ahead and draft it, we put it on consent, and if three council members have a problem, three council members can pull it. But, you know, I'll put it on consent unless we hear from three council members. And we'll just leave it at that then. But, you know, I think that the message from the council here is, we want to make life easy on, on the neighborhood, and we want it to, to work for people, and I'm sure you want the same thing. So if we could vote on the board?
What are we voting on?
What do we have?
I want to make an amendment to our motion.
Okay.
There's nothing in there right now that talks about what the price is at all. All it says is that in Section 2, vehicles displaying overnight residential parking permits from designated streets shall be exempt, et cetera. And I would like to add that such residential parking permits shall not exceed $5 per night, and if at all possible, may be paid, may be purchased online from the city.
Are you fine with it? You know, I don't really want to do a second round. Okay, so we could vote on the board?
This is for the whole motion with the amendment?
Yes. We're moting with the, with the amendment.
Amendment accepted.
Wait, wait a minute, not the amendment down below here?
No.
Okay, just what Larry just did.
That's correct.
A brand-new one.
Are you fine with the language?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes unanimously.
Good job.
All right, and now we're moving on to item number four. Do we have any speakers on item number four? We have no speakers on item number four. Oh, we have one, all right. Yes. All right. Whenever you're ready to proceed. If you could take the conversation outside, though, so we could continue. Thanks. Otherwise, I may have to have like a few.
I am surprised why you didn't even post that, and you didn't agree with Mr. Schmidt about...
Shh. Thanks. Shh. Staff, if you're ready to proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf. Greg Betts, Director of Community Services. I'm here to transmit information back to the council. You'll recall that a number of months ago, the merchants of downtown Palo Alto asked staff whether or not it was possible to consider a smoking ban in the downtown areas of Lydon Plaza, Cogswell Plaza, and a small park at Califor, off of California Avenue. We took the matter to the Policy and Services Committee in March, on March the 19th, and the Policy and Services Committee asked that staff re-
Sorry. If you would walk outside, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. Asked that staff return to council with a draft ordinance for parks under five acres. When the matter came to the city council, it was an action item. And Chair Niss gave a report from Policy and Services, and after some discussion, it was decided that there was so much support for the idea of limiting smoking, that this be applied to all parks in Palo Alto, including our open space areas. And Vice Mayor Shepherd made a motion asking that the Parks and Recreation Commission be consulted on whether or not exemption should be created for larger city parks. Tonight, I want to acknowledge Darren Anderson, who's the Director of Open Space Parks and Golf, is with me tonight, who's helped carry this item. And we have members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Vice Chair Jennifer Hennel-Lilly, who was the chair at the May the 28th meeting where this was discussed, is here and is prepared to speak if there are questions from the council. Also here tonight, Keith Rechdel, and Commissioner Deirdre Crummy, and Pat Markovich. Subsequent to the meeting on May the 28th, or May the 13th, I apologize, when council asked to seek input from the Parks and Recreation Commission, we took the matter to the Parks and Recreation Commission on May the 28th, and the commission made two motions. The first was to affirm that the ordinance should apply to all open space areas. There are four open space preserves in Palo Alto, Clark Preserve, Pearson-Arastodero, the Baylands and Fodiles Park. Secondarily, they said that there should be no change at the golf course, but allowing for future non-smoking designations in highly trafficked areas, such as the practice putting green, at staff discretion. And then a second motion was made to recommend that a smoking designated area in the three larger parks, Mitchell, Rinconada, and Greer, be considered. So before you tonight are really two alternatives. Both of the alternatives make smoking in the open space preserve banned, and all of the, both ordinances also increase a no-smoking zone- both ordinances also increase a no-smoking zone around buildings from 20 to 25 feet. In order to be able to visualize the designated smoking areas, we prepared a couple of slides just to give you both an aerial view of our parks, because we asked our park staff, you know, in order to create a designated smoking area, where would you put this, where it wouldn't interfere with bathroom buildings, backstops, bleachers, children's playground areas, or other heavily packed, used parts of the parks, such as picnic areas? So, the first aerial slide I'll just show you is a view of Mitchell Park. And what's denoted is an area just off of the main parking lot, not too far from the bathroom building, that is significantly away from the bowl, it's away from the tennis courts, it's away from all the playground areas. This gives you kind of a view, if you were standing at the bathroom building of Mitchell Park, where that designated smoking area, 10 feet by 10 feet, would be at Mitchell Park. Secondly, if you were to look at Rinconada Park, there's an area, again, somewhat of a challenge to find an area that's away from children's playgrounds, away from picnic areas, away from buildings, such as the pool building. But there is a place off the side of the bowl area that could be designated as a smoking area at Rinconada Park. This would be, again, a 10-foot by 10-foot area that would require installation of signs, a butt container, and a bench for people to use. And then finally, at Greer Park, an area closest to West Bay Shore Road. Greer Park was especially problematic because of the number of backstops, which under state law are restricted to smoking, the children's play areas, and, and other areas that would just be creating a problem. So, to find a place, this area of Greer Park along West Bay Shore Road was the, the place that staff recommended. And that's all, this isn't, you know, any sort of a final decision, but it's to give you an idea of proximally where the designated smoking areas would be within the parks. In some cases, it would not be that difficult to walk outside of the park to, to smoke. But at any rate, that's the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Alternative B. And again, alternative A is a cross-the-board smoking at all parks and open space areas. I'll be glad to, Darren and I will be glad to answer any questions. And again, Vice Chair Jennifer Hederly is here on behalf of the Parks and Rec Commission if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one speaker of the public, Joel Betts.
I think your alternative B seems like a pretty good idea. I think, in general, smoking has been villainized, sometimes perhaps politically motivatedly, and more research needs to be done on that. There's other sources of annoyances in terms of smoke, such as the smoke from restaurants in downtown, I've noticed to be quite annoying at times. And I think it's a bit oppressive, the, I call it madness of anti-smoking mania, although I see the validity of the interest of people who are non-smokers. And I think the two different interests need to be further studied. I generally think the idea of banning smoking in the open spaces seems sensible. For one thing, it is a fire hazard, smoking. And I would urge putting off any final decision on that, this matter, till perhaps a little bit later date to allow more analysis of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we return to council for questions, motions, comments, et cetera. Vice Mayor Shepard.
Yes, thank you very much for the, your report and for bringing this forward, and thank you, commissioners, for working on this. I would like to go ahead and kick this off by making a motion to accept the recommendation by staff, which would be to amend the Chapter 914 Smoking and Tobacco Regulations of the Palo Alto Municipal Code by adding Section 9.14.005, by accepting Attachment A, which would be ban smoking in all parks. And then also, item number three, I believe we need to do that as well, which is Section 9.14.01, increase the no-smoking buffer zone near public building entrances from 20 to 25 feet, for consistency with the LEED standards.
And I would second that.
I actually saw Councilmember Price's lips move first.
Oh, sorry.
I was looking that way and forgot, lucky. Councilmember Price. Want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, just briefly. And, and I know that I was the one who made this recommendation, and in, in all honesty, I was thinking of the open space districts, just because you really have to drive way out to get far out, and yet I hear consistency that that would not be good or wise to have in the open space districts. I think it would be inappropriate to have the butt stations, you know, in Rinconada Park, and Mitchell Park, and Greer Park. I think that that is not at all what Palo Altons expect right now. I don't think it's an issue in the parks right now. I don't see a lot of smoking going on, but I think that it's important to be consistent that there's just no, no smoking in all parks in the city of Palo Alto.
Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you. I'm seconding the motion, because it's very well documented that secondhand smoke is dangerous. And it's clear that in order to protect public health, public health, welfare, and safety, we should be prohibiting smoking in our public parks. And it will create a cleaner and more hygienic environment, and less trash, and it reduces a fire hazard. All of these items were well documented in the staff report, and these are the reasons for my second.
Councilmember Niss.
Let me see if I can be as brief as my colleagues. That was great. This one truly is, I hope, a slam dunk. I was fortunate enough to be on the council in the 90s, when the first ban was passed, getting rid of smoking in restaurants, which was an absolute chamber full of people who were absolutely outraged that we were going to get rid of smoking in restaurants and in bars, and swore that the result of that would be a great decrease in the number of patrons that they had. And I'm sure you're not surprised, the number of patrons increased, because most people want to eat in a smoke-free area. And I think they want to picnic in a smoke-free area. And I think designating an area where they can smoke probably would end up being worse than simply smoking at large throughout the park where the smoke can dissipate. But I think I probably feel the most strongly about this, having had a parent who had emphysema and who died of emphysema. And I think that kind of sets you off for life, as far as how you see smoking. So, I am sympathetic with those who are addicted. I, I certainly feel great sympathy. But our job here is to protect the public, and I think the best way we protect the public is to pass the motion that the Vice Mayor has made tonight.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, the, I guess, one major difference with the Parks and Rec Commission was their attitude towards the golf course. I wonder if I could ask Chair Hederly to state what the Parks and Rec Commission said about that.
As I recall, our discussion about the golf course primarily focused on concern, number one, about the, that we thought the golf course was really a different kind of a setting, because your population was self-selecting for a fairly limited purpose, of which smoking was part of the culture for many of the people who go. So, there was some concern that we would turn people away, who find smoking in their cigar a critical part of that golfing experience, but also that it's a much larger place where the people are spread out. There aren't kids playing in playgrounds, there aren't people strolling in strollers for the most part. So, we felt like the health impact was a little bit different. And also that we're concerned with the significant investment in the new design of the golf course, that we didn't want to risk, at this point, turning away clientele when we're trying to build, build a clientele for the new golf course. There was discussion about reconsidering it after the new golf course has opened, and seeing how things go with that, that this may be something to revisit at a later date.
Thank you. I wonder if I could ask the maker of the motion if they would accept smoking on the golf course?
You made the motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay. I will make that as an amendment, then.
Do you want to speak to your amendment?
Oh, I think the Parks and Rec Commission had a long discussion of the, the issue. They did expand it to open spaces, to all parks. But they did make an exception of the golf course. And I thought the part that made a lot of sense was, the golf course is going through major changes, where we have a, a big investment in its success. And it might be something that could be looked at in the future, but at the current time, there's some argument could be made that that could be an exception.
Councilmember Berman, may I speak to your second?
Well, I think Councilmember Schmidt, you know, hit a lot of the high notes. I think just to, I mean, one thing that might be worth discussing is where at the golf course. I wouldn't want smoking on the putting range, I wouldn't want smoking at the driving range, I wouldn't want smoking, you know, where people congregate and the smoker would be idle. But, you know, if you're either walking or carting around 18 holes of a golf course, you know, anybody else, other than the people who are there in your group, are never really going to feel the effects of the smoke you're, you're emitting, because they're so far away from you, and it takes a long time for them to get to wherever you are. And so, I think the health concerns are a bit less, you know, I totally understand and agree with, with the city parks, but I do think the golf course is a separate situation. And, and I think, you know, I think we're still being remarkably health-conscious while still omitting the golf course from the ban. And I agree that the, the Parks and Rec Commission had a lengthier discussion than, you know, we are, or have had, and decided that that was the right move, and I think that's something to be, you know, not taken too lightly.
Councilmember Burt.
So, when this came before us a number of months ago, and it was the proposal to restrict or prohibit smoking at Litton and Cogswell Plazas, I actually raised the issue of why such a narrow proposal. And I was supportive of broadening it. And then we went from that position to, to what is basically the council wanting to do, what's in Attachment A. Vice Mayor Shepard had a amendment that went long ways toward what I was interested in, which is allowing the Parks and Recreation Commission to reconsider this with the intention of broadening it, but look at other ramifications. I didn't think that amendment went quite as far as I wanted. But basically, the principle I, I felt was appropriate is to, to really look at this in a broader way. I, I would like to restrict this, restrict smoking in our parks to the extent that it impacts other part, park users. I think that's really the primary issue. I'm concerned about a couple of things. One is really the difference between restricting those impacts on others versus overly legislating behavior. And there's a delicate balance, there's not a clear line to be drawn between those. But I think, I really believe that, that what was actually the majority recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission, which is Attachment B, is more appropriate. I have neighbors who, if they don't have a designated smoking area in a large park, they're going to be smoking on the sidewalk as they walk their dog, instead of in that area. And I don't prefer that. I'd find that more intrusive on neighbors. And, and I think I also simply, even if I don't smoke, and my family doesn't smoke, and I, I don't enjoy being around smoking, I have a, a certain reservation about making it so that smokers can't go to our parks and, if they're smokers, and, and spend extensive time there. So, I would, I don't know whether I'll get any support for it, but I would move that we substitute motion of Attachment B, which is the majority recommendation of the Parks and Rec, Rec Commission.
Seeing to a second. Councilmember Klein.
I'm going to vote against the amendment. We heard the same arguments in the 90s, as Councilmember Niss has pointed out. I think when we passed the ban on smoking in restaurants, we heard it actually back in the 80s, when we passed the first anti-smoking ordinances that affected movie theaters. And those economic concerns have not passed. I do not buy the idea that this is a self-selecting group in wide-open spaces, and therefore they're okay. All the golf groups that I hear want to encourage youth groups, because they worry that if they don't develop a young population to play golf, then there is not going to be golf courses. And as we know from hearing testimony before, there's a decline in, been a decline in the number of golf rounds played, and there's a decline in the number of golf courses. So, there's an appeal to youth. I don't want the youth of Palo Alto and our surrounding communities to think that, oh, if they play golf, then they can smoke, or maybe turning that around, that if you're a golfer, part of the appeal of golfing is that you're, you can smoke, or that it looks attractive, sort of the old ads, which showed the, the great-looking men and women, that's the people who are smoking cigarettes. If you want to be great-looking, then you smoke. So, for all those reasons, and of course, just the general health reason, I don't, I don't think that we want to be in a position of encouraging people to smoke. And I, I just don't believe that golfers are any different than anybody else, and that they're going to suddenly say, "I'm not going to play golf in Palo Alto unless I just have to have my fix every three or four holes."
Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, I, I also won't be supporting the, the amendment. I mean, I have, in periods of time in my life, lived in that world of being on golf courses a lot. And I just didn't see anybody, you know, passing out because they couldn't have a smoke. I just, maybe it was just the people I was around, but I just, I just didn't see that. I also don't think it's the message we want to send. I think we ought to be consistent in where we, where we support good health practices, and people can smoke, and they can pick and choose where they do want to smoke. But it doesn't have to be on our open space, which I consider a golf course, some of our prime open space. If there's a real issue, I doubt it, but if there's a real issue after the golf course opens, that for some reason or other, it turns out that we're not getting the playing because, because of our no-smoking ban, you know, we can look at this again, but I can't imagine that would be the case. So, I won't be supporting the amendment.
If we could vote on the board?
On the amendment?
This is on the amendment? Yes, this is on the amendment. And that fails on a six to three, with Councilmembers Burt, Berman, and Schmidt voting yes. Now, if we could vote on the main motion? And that passes on an eight to one, with Councilmember Burt voting no. Now, if we could move on to item number five? Now, if we could move on to item number five?
My name is Thomas Farbach. I'm the Economic Development Manager. And the intent of this item tonight is really for us to start to build a framework and strategy for how we choose which cities and regions to partner with moving on in the future, and also how we will come to measure the success of these efforts. Although we intend to honor the history and value of our sister cities and the sister city model, we also seek the council's direction to work together with neighbors abroad and other volunteer leaders in the community to explore a new, more nimble, and less permanent model for the future global partnerships. The first part of the recommended action tonight authorizes the mayor to execute a smart cities partnership agreement with the city of Heidelberg in Germany. Staff would use this non-binding agreement as a test case for the new model of partnership and work together with neighbors abroad and other folks in the community who support the partnership. The idea would be to build a structure for an exchange that is fruitful and where outcomes can be measured. Included in the staff report is the presentation made by representatives of Heidelberg as well as SAP here locally in Palo Alto from late last year, as well as a document outlining several of Heidelberg's sustainability initiatives and commitments. If approved tonight, the mayor and other council members would most likely make arrangements to sign the agreement in, in the week of August, I'm sorry, October 5th in Germany. Second, staff recommends that you discuss the invitation by the Bay Area Council to participate in the U.S.-China Symposium, which is the week of October 17th in Shanghai, China. This conference is in line with our current exploratory agreement with the Yangpu District in Shanghai. There is also an idea that staff could work together with Stanford, especially the Technology Ventures Program, to explore the idea of creating a local government innovations and entrepreneurship fellowship here in the city manager's office. And that could potentially be mirrored by the University of Alto and the city of Espoo in Finland, which could potentially be, be the basis for a very interesting and fruitful exchange there, and potentially also a smart cities partnership in the future. The idea is that the council would direct us to explore that potential with Stanford and return to the council, most likely in the beginning of 2014, with any plans that emerge and for any potential actions at that point. Lastly, as we explore the concept of the smart cities partnership, staff is requesting that the council direct us to work with neighbors abroad, to reach out to our current sister cities, as well as the neighbors abroad volunteers, to determine whether our current cities that we are sistered with would be interested in exploring this new type of relationship, given that we have a long history and have built a very strong foundation for relationships with all those. So really with that, I would turn it back to you, Mayor Scharf, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. And we have two speakers tonight. The first is Bob Moss, to be followed by Bing Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf, and Councilmembers. This has some positives and it has some potential negatives, and I just want to caution you about that. When you start talking to foreigners about technology, it can get very, very sticky. The type of agreement you're talking about entering into with Heidelberg, where you're exchanging information about environmental sustainability and energy efficiency, that sort of thing, is not a particular problem. And looking at the Heidelberg proposal, I don't think that's going to get you in any trouble. What bothers me is the potential agreement with Yangpu. Number two, the parties facilitate technological, scientific, environmental sustainability, educational, and cultural exchanges between the two communities. When you get into technology and science, you're on very shaky grounds because, I don't know if you've ever heard of it, there's something called the ITARS, International Traffic in, International Traffic in, damn, International Traffic in Technology Restrictions. And I'll give you just a couple of examples of problems I've had personally. In the early 80s, Ford Aerospace won the first contract to build a commercial satellite for the Indian government. And they sent a large group of Indians over to work with us, and I got very familiar with the program manager. And I found out later, he directly reported to Indira Gandhi, who at that time was the Prime Minister of India. And one time, he came into my office and he asked me some questions. He said, well, why don't you talk to so-and-so? He has the answers to these questions you've got. So-and-so has had an office down the hall. So I went to so-and-so's office. I happened to run into him just outside my office, and so I brought him back in, and there was the Indian going through papers on my desk. Second problem we had was, we had, we developed a very sophisticated antenna to use on spacecraft, which could very carefully channel information. Instead of looking at just a half a continent or a state, we could look at a portion of a city. And we were testing it on the roof of one of our buildings, and we saw these two guys taking photographs with telephoto lenses. So security went out to find them, and they jumped in a car and zipped up the freeway toward San Francisco Airport. Highway Patrol pulled them over, and it turned out to be two Japanese who worked for one of our competitors, who were spying on us. So you have to be very careful, the kind of technology. I could just see the Chinese coming in here and saying, well, take us to this biological laboratory so we can find out what they're working on and what kind of tests they're performing, what kind of results they're getting, and what kind of positive and negative issues you're coming into. Be very careful about how you work with the technology and the science information. The penalties for violating the ITARS is a million-dollar fine and 20 years in jail. I don't want to see the city getting into any trouble.
Thank you. Bing Wei?
Good evening, Mayor Scharf, and good evening, every Council member. Thanks for giving me the time to be here. My name's Bing Wei. I'm working for the Bay Area Council. I'm the Vice President for Global Initiatives. So we're very glad and honored to be able to instrumental in recommending and eventually making Palo Alto and Yangpu District to be the smart city partnership, signing three years non-binding MOUs with a framework to do a lot of exchanges between each other. So the, I do appreciate the delivery, which we just delivered. And in the 21st century globalized economy, and there was a shared economy, the whole framework was set up less so of providing a project-specific programs, but rather in a more broader structure. But we do have started the education program, which we sent six Palo Alto high school students to China last month for three weeks, which was a life-changing experience for them, not only learning Mandarin, but also visit companies, which not only including the Palo Alto companies, such as VMware, on the ground, Wells Fargo, as well as Chinese company, to see how Chinese company operates. So I'm Palo Alto citizen, and I'm very supportive to the moving forward of signing up Germany-Handelberg's deal in a similar framework as we have done with Yangpu. And also, we do have 200 or so U.S. members, which have them based in China, say, law firms, Pew Spray, Morrison &amp; Foster, Wilson &amp; Sosini, they will be able to helping to guideline in terms of IP in China. And we've been helped, VMware, our biggest Palo Alto employer, establishing Yangpu itself. And our governor, Jerry Brown, just opened a California trade office in Yangpu itself in April, when we brought 120 U.S. executives to China. So we're also helping test it right now to operate in China, to overcome the obstacles in terms of policy in China. Overall, so I would like to support your moving ahead with Germany MOU and in a similar nature of what we've done in Yangpu, and we're very much hoping to collaborate with neighbors abroad and getting a lot of advice, like which we have done just now, and to move forward. If you have more advice for us, we'd be very happy to collaborate with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we return to council for questions, comments, and motions. Vice Mayor Shepherd?
Thank you. And, you know, I guess I was, I just have one question before I make some comments. Why would Germany be the first test case when we already have the Yangpu agreement? It seems like we've been working this for the last year already. So would it be different or?
I think, I think the answer to that question is that the disparity in terms of cultural and business differences in, in China, there's, there's a lot more room for sort of building a foundation and a cultural understanding, whereas with Heidelberg, we've been developing relationships with the mayor there and with their, their staff there for several years. I think we're, we're closer to a more tangible type of relationship with deliverables that, that can be measured. And so it's in that, it's in that respect that, that I would say that, you know, that's where, that's a test case of the, the smart city partnership, as opposed to an exploratory sort of agreement that we forged with Yangpu.
Okay, good. Thank you. In that case, I would like to go ahead and kick this off by making the motion for all four of the points that you've listed. If I can get a second? No second?
You need a second?
Yes.
I need a second.
Okay. And then I'd like to speak to, okay. First off, I think it's fantastic. Point number four, working with neighbors abroad. I know that there's been an eagerness to try to rein, I don't like using the word reinvigorate, because when I went to their 50th anniversary, I couldn't move over at Lucy Stern Ballroom. So congratulations for that. And yet, at the same time, we know that there's a certain eagerness with some of our current sister cities with being able to explore this type of economic partnership. And so I think as we move forward, we should go ahead and, and take a look at some of the first shots there. Since I've been involved in the one with, let's see, the Yangpu, the China Smart City Symposium that's coming forward, I've been on the steering committee, I've also been working with Bing over here with getting those six students over to China for Shanghai for the student studies. And it's been really amazing because as, I consider Palo Alto a global city, I know I've said this before, but we are global trendsetters. And to expose our high schoolers to the experience of walking into Angry Birds, and actually over there, they did get to go to the Design Center, which is in the Alto University from Espoo in Finland. So there is a connection that Palo Alto makes over in the Yangpu District right there with the university. I think that this is, in, in the Yangpu exchange we've been doing with the students, I hope everybody got to read the report from last week, which was informational, which had the daily emails back from the chaperone from that trip. The kids were bright, interested, asking good questions, better questions. They said that some of our State Department employees for the United States of America, when they were being debriefed from Wells Fargo Bank in particular, they also got to see the American Chamber of Commerce over there, in addition to the Yangpu government. So opening up these possibilities, we also were able to make a connection with a Stanford student that wanted to go and see the Bay Area Council offices over in Yangpu. These are emerging issues, and this is really big conversation. If we think big data is big, this is even bigger when you talk about global enterprise and global finances. And so having that experience to actually go over and have the tour, not only to learn the language, which would support their experience over at Gunn &amp; Pally, but then also the global introduction to the economy, I think was, is very useful. And I see nothing but other good experiences that we can have as we pursue this further. And I, I think that we do have a natural synergy, obviously, with Heidelberg, Germany, because of our, our interest in the green tech and, and best practices. And Western Europe, obviously, has had to go much more quickly into some of the green energy because they just don't have the type of exchange that we have here. So I also would like to make sure that everybody understands that all council members are invited to China for the symposium this year. It starts in Tianjin, which is right outside of Beijing, which is the Chinese Model City. Is that what it's called? The Model City for Green Technology, right, and Deliverable Services? And then it ends up in the Yangpu District. It'll go to Hangzhou, which is where Bay Area Council has developed a research park there that they are still starting to deploy. And then it ends up down at Yangpu District. And Bing will happily have you join her tour. I highly recommend it. She knows how to give a good, very high-level exploration of China, actually. I think it's really amazing to get to see it at that level because they, they basically have to go green because I think they've got 300 million people in what they can, what we call the middle class, but then there's this other 1 billion people that are not there yet. And so there's a lot of work to be done, and I think that the exchange that we have in Palo Alto is very useful for our partnership in Yangpu.
Councilmember Niss, would you like to speak to your second?
I think it is a wonderful direction to be going in. I'm also looking at neighbors abroad, which has made such a big difference over all these years, especially in the cultural aspects of it. I hear Bob Moss's admonition regarding sharing secrets, and I think that actually has some validity. But I think what this really has is a wonderful opportunity to interact on a very different level with what, what will be somewhat like a sister city, instead a sister relationship that's more technologically based. And I, I, you know, certainly will be anxious to hear about the trip that you all take to China or to Heidelberg, whichever one it may be. So I'm very supportive of this.
Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you. One question I have is the way, the discussion of the local government innovations and entrepreneurial entrepreneurship with the city of Espoo. You're saying that you'll come back later with more details around that, is that correct?
That's correct. At this point, it's, it's an idea that we would partner with Stanford in creating a fellowship, and that Espoo in Finland would, would partner with Alto University there in a mirrored program, and that we would, you know, compare notes and perhaps even work together to build the structure. But at this point, it is just a concept, and we're just asking for your direction to give us the go-ahead to, you know, basically explore that and come back to you with, with what sort of framework we have put together.
Okay, thank you. And given the public sensitivity to costs, if you could just clarify the, the travel expenses and the fees that city council members would, would need to cover for these tours would be paid for by city council members, is that correct?
That is the understanding, although we did, we did leave the, you know, some, some bit of room for you to discuss those fees as part of tonight's action. I know that the Bay Area Council has come up with a, a special government rate. Off the top of my head, I cannot remember what that is at this point, but that, that would be part of the discussion for, for the council. But typically, those types of travel arrangements have been paid for either by the council or sometimes a sponsoring government entity.
Okay, thank you. And the last question is, in, in all of these cases, the issue of resources needed to support your work and others that may be involved, that would come back with kind of numbers around that? Because this, these kinds of programs don't just fall from the sky. They require effort, resources, time, and labor.
Correct. I, I think that depending on what the deliverables would be in terms of the agreement that we, that we've made and what we decide to work on, that would involve some staff time at probably different levels of the organization. And we could, we could come back with, with, you know, some numbers around that for, for council's consideration. issue of resources needed to support your work and others that may be involved, that would come back with kind of numbers around that? Because this, these kinds of programs don't just fall from the sky. They require effort, resources, time, and labor.
Correct. I, I think that depending on what the deliverables would be in terms of the agreement that we, that we've made and what we decide to work on, that would involve some staff time at probably different levels of the organization. And we could, we could come back with, with, you know, some numbers around that for, for council's consideration.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, I think, generally speaking, I think this is exciting and a direction to go. A direction to go. I do have, Councilmember Price alluded to one area where I have some concern, and that is resource impact. We have a one-person Economic Development Department, and we have a lot of things, a lot of things the city wants to accomplish, and the staff wants to accomplish, this council and community want to accomplish. So my real concern is, you know, staff says that some time will be dedicated to this effort. Of course it will. And as Mr. Farinbuck just said, there'll be different levels of staff involved too, which is, you know, there's even more of a commitment. I can imagine legal department would be involved, certainly to, to a degree. And my concern is like biting off too much at once. So I'm actually going to make a substitute motion, which is to go forward with numbers one and three at this time. And the reason for that is because I think it is prudent for us to do this in a phased manner and not try to do all of it at once and not prioritize. I think one and three, because of the comments that have been made previously about Heidelberg, make a whole lot of sense to go forward with that. And also the partnership with Stanford University for the creation of the Government Innovations and Entrepreneurship Fellowship also makes a whole lot of sense. And that's groundwork that can be laid for future steps two and four. So my motion is to go forward at this time with numbers one and three.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
I think I have.
Okay. Councilmember Klein, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes. I think that part of our future certainly is dealing with the other areas of the world on, for economic reasons. But I think we need to define what we're trying to accomplish. And I, among others, raised this issue in our previous meeting on this. My remarks are at page 193 in tonight's packet. And with all due respect, I don't think the questions I raised have been answered. The basic question there is, what are we trying to accomplish? What would success look like? Mr. Farinbuck did refer to standards, but I, and what are our metrics, but they're not in the report. So I, I am troubled by that. And I think it gets to the point that we shouldn't bite off more than we can handle. And Yangpu and Heidelberg are two big pieces. And so we see what they should do. I don't know why we would want to start thinking even bigger. Number four says we ought to explore with all of our sister cities, whether they're interested. That's a very, very different situation. Again, I asked, what, what are we trying to do? With Heidelberg, we're dealing with a peer city, for example. Palo and Oaxaca are certainly not peer cities economically. So are we, if we wanted to do something with them, are we, are we being, we can't be a peer? Are we trying to just help them out, sort of be a donor? I think those are all questions to be answered before we start spending lots of staff time and any other resources of the city on this. On number two, I, I support what Karen has suggested here in deleting it, because I don't see why we need a motion on this. And I don't understand what the motion means. Bay Area Council invites all of us at our own expense to join them on a trip to China, special emphasis on smart cities. Great. I think that those of us who may be interested, and I might be interested, I would encourage people to go. But I, I think it's way too early for the city to be spending any of its money on us to be spent traveling. And so I don't know what it seems to me to have in there doesn't mean anything. Council members do not need council's approval to go on a trip at their own expense. As for four, I think I've already addressed that. So I, I think that the substitute motion makes more sense. And I would also urge, but not put in any motion, that the staff still needs to really define what the metrics are, what are we trying to get out of this, and what type of resources we're going to be spending on it.
Councilmember Schmidt.
I was just going to say, thank you, Councilmember Schmidt, that part of the reason why we brought this forward is that, so previously, the council had not, in the last year, let's say, had kind of made a decision to pay for travel on their own. It was brought to staff's attention that not everyone is able to do that. So it was suggested that we bring this forward to give you an opportunity to discuss that because certainly if you did decide to use city funds for that, you'd want to have that discussion here. And you'd want to be able to make a motion to say that it was supported and therefore budgeted funds could be used.
Yeah, let me express my experience in going through this. I'm excited about the notion of building relationships with foreign cities. And I think through Neighbors Abroad, you know, we've talked about culture, we've talked about student exchanges, conferences, ways of building bridges. But this idea is, let's go further and get into a working relationship. And you use smart cities, technology innovation, and sustainability as areas that we might work with them. And I looked through the four and scratched my head and tried to say, what are the benefits that would flow to Palo Alto, to the city, to the council, from this type of relationship? And it was nice to have the material from Heidelberg. And you even listed organizations that might participate. But one of the goals of the Heidelberg thing is specific interests as assistant to businesses. Now, that's not our job. We don't do that here. We, we don't have businesses foster, specific businesses. So I find it hard to see what our role would be in doing that. Now, the second part of the Heidelberg made sense, sustainability. And you have some material in here that says, here's what Heidelberg has done, here's measures that they have. And we can compare them to what we have done and measures we have taken about achieving sustainable goals. And I can translate that into, gee, over the next three years, if we have biennial exchanges, we could get the UAC to have a subcommittee each six months to review what Heidelberg is doing, to express what we as a city have done to achieve our sustainable goals, send it to them, we'd exchange that. And over three years with six exchanges, we can see the dynamics of a city like us in a European setting, taking initiatives and measuring those initiatives just as we take some and measure those. And I think it would be very fruitful. I can see some real benefits coming to the way we think about sustainability. The other one that is attractive to me is number three, with the Finnish city and university, with us and Stanford doing it. It's based upon there being two graduate researchers. In other words, the personnel, the people doing the jobs, would be grad students doing their work, sharing ideas. Now, one of the goals there is government innovation. I would love to see a flow of information from a sophisticated Finnish city about, here's how the government operates on things like sustainability and technology. Here's how we share it with the community. Here's how we run an open government. Here's how we make decisions with the private sector in there. And I think that type of relationship can be very valuable to the council, to all council members, as well as people in the city. So those two, number one and three, I can see concrete benefits coming to the city with a limited call on our resources. You know, one, utilizing the UAC as our liaison, and two, using these grad students to feed information that would be valuable to the council and to the city. So I like the notion of this motion.
Councilmember Berman.
Thanks. So while in theory I support one, three, and four, I'm going to support the, the substitute motion for the reasons of really wanting to get a better grasp of, of what the smart city concepts are and really solidifying them with one or two cities before we expand them out too fast and too far. I, I think that that can lead to a lot more kind of pain and failure than it can success if we don't know what we're trying to do. And I think it makes a lot more sense to, you know, focus our efforts on, on one or two cities first before, you know, before expanding those. So that's the main reason. I think that we should absolutely, in time, look to expand those ideas to our neighbor, to our sister cities through Neighbors Abroad. But, but I think that we're kind of setting ourselves up for failure if we spread ourselves too thin before we even know kind of what we're doing.
So I, I agree with Councilmember Holman, and Councilmember Berman, and Councilmember Klein. And I really appreciate the fact that we focused it to one and three. I think that's, that's the right approach. We can always, I don't think this precludes coming back with four after we solidify these relationships with some concrete proposals if those cities actually decide that they, you know, if there's some city who's a, who's a sister city who wishes to, to do that. So I don't think this is, you know, saying you can't do that. I just think what we're doing is focusing on what's on the table. I think that's the right way to go. Councilmember Burt.
I agree with the motion that's on the floor. And, and I just would like to further recommend the focus of these relationships, not, not exclusively, but the primary focus be around two areas. Technology innovation in government and sustainable city best prac, best practices in sustainable cities. And I should note that Heidelberg is, out of the international organization of C40, which is the large cities internationally who are committed to sustainability, Heidelberg is the smallest member of the C40 organization. They're very prominent. Their mayor is president of the European Council of Green Cities. And so they are really cutting edge and doing things that we can learn from. Hopefully, we're doing some things that they can learn from. But I think there's a real value there. And they also are very leading edge on technology innovation in city government. And those are two things we've been committed to. And I think the benefits are not limited to our engagements with Heidelberg or this kind of model. But I think that really shows concrete values that are important and align with our priorities. So I'll support the motion.
Vice Mayor Shepard.
Well, although I, I don't disagree with you on trying to narrow the focus right now, I honestly, I don't, because it does take staff time. And I understand item number two is something we're doing anyway. We already have launched our partnership with Yangpu's and, and the Smart City Symposium is going to be held in China this year and back to Silicon Valley next year. So we'll be hosting it. So it's not like that is going to go away. It's just we don't have the conversation about whether or not council members could get some support for travel. Because it is very expensive to go. It is very rewarding because I did go last November on my own nickel. Item number four, though, is the one that concerns me, that to walk away from right now. And the reason why is that we are, we, there's a lot of cities that want to do partnerships. Already, item number three is the venture into the concept of possibly a smart city partnership with Espo. Is that how you pronounce it? And yet, at the same time, we know that we have a couple cities with our neighbors abroad that might actually be good fits for us. And I think that since we've had longstanding relationships with those cities, I'm going to be not supporting the current motion, even though in concept I do, I agree with number, items number one and three. And I don't think we need to vote on number two. But on number four, I would like to continue to develop a better relationship with Neighbors Abroad so that we can understand how to get, how to have those cities percolate up if we're going to continue to expand throughout the years. Again, I, I'm happy to get matrix and, and, you know, lined up. But on the other hand, if there's absolutely no interest with any of those cities, then we don't even need to talk about it. But at this point, I would like to explore that. I would like to have staff explore it.
Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you. I will be supporting the substitute, let's see, wait a minute, motion. But there is one concern I have, and that is that we don't come across as Eurocentric. I think it's important for us, again, to acknowledge the very important relationships that have been built with Yangpu and China, as well as the very fine work that's been happening through Neighbors Abroad. I think the discussion here, I mean, my takeaway is that there is interest in looking at this in the future, but that in recognition of the resource issues and time required to do this really well, it really is prudent to, to focus on one and three. And really, the benefit of that is then, as we kind of revisit these other ideas and have a more sophisticated relationship, and as we learn through, you know, our work with the Yangpu District, and, you know, learning from neighborhoods abroad, that it would be advisable then to, with additional experience, do a better job to make sure this is successful. It is very important that these relationships have a positive outcome and be mutually beneficial for all the stakeholders that are involved. But initially, one of my concerns was that in no way is this giving a signal because of the choices we've made this evening. And I felt it's important to say that.
Okay. Councilmember Holman.
Yes, staff had brought up the notion, although it's not what was put before, staff had brought the notion of us discussing how we pay for many council member trips to any of these locations. And I think it would be helpful if staff provided to us what the possible funding sources were for council support for going, any grants or sponsorships or that sort of thing. Because I'm not sure all of us know what those possibilities are if we're not self-funding.
All right, if we could vote on the board on the substitute motion. And that passes on a seven to two vote with Council, Vice Mayor Shepard and Councilmembers Niss voting no. And now for our last item of the evening, which is the Policy and Services Committee Boards and Commissions Recruitment Program Revisions. Do we have a staff presentation?
We would like Councilmember Niss to start it off as the Chair of the Policy and Services Committee.
Okay. Councilmember Niss, take it away.
I would if I could find my notes, but hang on a second.
So you can't make the motion because we have a speaker.
I won't make the motion, I promise. They just announced if I do an intro. So what we're bringing up tonight is something that we've discussed just once in Policy and Services this year, but it was also discussed last year. And was introduced at that time under Chair Holman. And then it was essentially aired at that point and went back to, to the clerk's office and her staff. And they have been working at it, and it has come back to us one other time. I, I look at this as a very innovative program. It will save money. It's going to utilize our resources better. And And this kind of revision, which is in front of you, which they will explain to you that this now allows us to take applications on a regular basis, allows us to alter the way that we advertise. And we can use far more social media this way. We're not limited any longer to using one particular paper. They're also going to and have looked at best practices. One of the things that we discussed is having a voluntary fair, a volunteer fair where we could come and you could find out what it is like to serve on one of these committees and/or commissions and make a contribution to your city in that way. There will be biannual opportunities to do the interviews instead of doing them on a consistent basis, something that Councilmember Klein has mentioned often and has made suggestions about how we should do this. But overall, what I would say, and I'm anxious to hear what Donna Greiden or her staff are going to say tonight, is this, I think, allows us a much broader outreach, a much more streamlined program. And they have told me they've already been contacted by other cities who wanted to know how to replicate our program. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will turn it back to the city clerk and her staff.
Good evening. Rana and I are really excited about this project. We've been working on this for the past year, and it's been a fun project. It's right up there with elections for me, because it's something we can do, we can give, that's a service, not only to the council, to look at your time that you spend on this, important, but also to honor the applicants and find ways to reach out and use it to the best. You know, we know that there has been some problems, and we've been working hard, and I think we brought some better applicants, but there's always room for improvement, and we recognize that, and we strive to listen to, Rana listens to the applicants as they come and as a contact. We spent a lot of time in the past year of researching with surrounding cities in the Bay Area to find out how the city clerks do it. And we were surprised to find, as we're at conferences, they're turning to us, let us know. At Rana got a call this morning, a council member in Stockton had told his city clerk he saw the report, contact them, find out how they're doing this. That makes us feel good, and I think that's, that shows that our work is being recognized, and we think it's a good product. Other than that, we're excited, we're, hopefully, we can move forward. Time, you know, we want to move forward in the fall with recognition for the board and commission members that have served, that we haven't been able to recognize in the past years, and we want to get back to doing that. And I'd like Rana to go into some of the key points of the program.
Hello. So we didn't do a formal presentation tonight, because we knew it would be kind of late in the night, and we wanted to focus on the conversation with you guys versus a presentation about a program you're all pretty familiar with, anyway. The whole conversation started because we received a lot of feedback from council, from members of the public, from applicants, from current commissioners, as well as from our own observations, that the program was stale and needed updating in a lot of different ways. So as Councilmember Niss said, we did appear before the Policy and Services Committee twice. The first time was sort of a study session that gave us some good directions to go in. And the second time, we brought back some really specific suggestions to the Policy and Services Committee. Most of our suggestions were approved unanimously. So those are what are coming before you again today. The first recommendation is to realign the recruitment schedule to a biannual schedule versus the staggered and continuous schedule we work on now. What that means is currently, there's about 11 recruitments a year between expiring terms and resignations. This will cut it down to, hopefully, to saving advertising costs, staff time, special council meetings, agenda items, I mean, there's just a whole lot that goes into it. So to be able to streamline that a little bit makes sense to us. We also want to allow for council to review midterm resignations. So if we have a spring recruitment, we have a fall recruitment, somebody resigns midsummer, we want to bring that back to council, you know, on a quick agenda item to allow you guys to determine whether or not we will do a special recruitment or hold that vacancy until the next scheduled recruitment. That way, we can look at, you know, the circumstances and the particular commission that it is. We want to also provide some advertising latitude for the city clerk's staff. We're currently required to advertise in the Palo Alto Weekly. Less than 10% of the applicants indicate that that's how they hear about the recruitment, so we don't feel like that's limiting us to that as the best use of our advertising We want to be able to use existing budget to ensure the public at large still knows about the recruitment, so we'll still be using website, emails, probably still newspapers, but hopefully in a little bit better way, maybe, you know, different newspapers, different kinds of ads. And then we can also use some budget to focus more on a targeted, you know, audience, so that we can really hit the people who will be the most interested in applying for that specific commission. We also want to continuously accept applications rather than only during an open recruitment process. Currently, our Muni code only allows us to accept applications for a specific number of days before, you know, an opening. It's really limiting. So we want to just be able to take applications all year long. I don't want to have to tell somebody they can't apply for a commission right now, call me back in June. I mean, that just doesn't make sense to me. We also want to encourage staff liaisons and the current commissioners to support the recruitment process. To me, this is all about outreach. I track data on every single recruitment that we do, and we receive more applications when I have the liaisons, the current commissioners, as well as council members participate. I get a dramatic increase in the amount of applications. I'm not asking the liaison, or you guys to go out and hunt down applications for me. I'm asking for a post on your Facebook page, a tweet, an email to a distribution list that you guys have access to, you know, something that's really simple, that allows access to a member, to members of the public that I don't have access to. And we would like permission to hold a trial volunteer fair. This is an opportunity to bring existing volunteers and staff together to meet with potential applicants. It's also a great chance for us to work with other in-house volunteer opportunities, and we probably will be able to combine it with some other city activities, such as a registration fair that the Community Services Group currently is doing, as well as potentially some library events, so we can really bring the public in and try and educate them on the volunteer opportunities we have in the city. Of course, with a focus on boards and commissions. And we want to host an annual recognition event. This is something that the Policy and Services Committee were very enthusiastic about. We want to do an annual event. We were directed due to the first one in 2013 to just demonstrate to the commissioners who commit so much of their time to the city every year, that we really do appreciate it. And then lastly, I do want to mention some ongoing work regarding this program that isn't really part of today's motion that we're asking you guys to make, but it still is important. The Policy and Services Committee assigned a subcommittee of Councilmember Holman and Councilmember Price to work with us to revise the application. So we're really digging in deep in the applications. We're looking at specific questions that are being asked and how those will look. We're also looking at the technology behind the applications. Currently, our idea of online applications is a Word application that we PDFed and put on the website, and that's not really, you know, we want to go more than that. And then also, PNS approved a kind of phase two to the program, which will include training and mentoring. And this is just in its very kind of conceptual stages right now, but we would like new commissioners to have a consistent level of Brown Act training, perhaps mentors with existing commissioners. Of course, this would be something the city clerk's office would coordinate. We're not qualified, obviously, to train on the Brown Act, but we would coordinate with city attorney's office or, you know, the planning department on specific things they would have to train their new commissioners to work on. But I think having that in one coordinated place will help us make sure the new commissioners are all getting a consistent level of information. And that's it. We're looking forward to having a conversation with you guys.
Thank you. Now we have one speaker from the public, Palo Alto Free Press.
The issue of newspaper of general circulation. I wrote an article, I think it was last month, involving Larry Klein's involvement in the actual contract proceedings involving the $450,000 contract with the Weekly, okay? Wonderful that, how the public records request, but the newspaper of general circulation falls under Government Code Section 600608. Really interesting about that, it dovetails right into the municipal code. But through a public records request came to determine that Larry Klein was actually involved in the actual petitioning the court granting the Weekly to gain this coveted newspaper of general circulation. Now, there's a definite conflict of interest here, Mr. Klein, okay? Because what it's going to result in, Mr. Klein, is I'm going to bring forth an ethics complaint against you as a result of my findings. Absolutely. I would suggest that you unblock my email address, Mr. Klein, okay? Because you should have recursed yourself. You should have. You should have, because the government requests that you do, okay? You should have publicly identified the financial interest that gives rise to the conflict of interest or potential conflict of interest in detail, sufficient to be understood by the public. You should have recused yourself or herself from discussing and voting on the matter, which you did, Mr. Klein. You voted on the Weekly contract. That is unethical. That is a criminal charge, Mr. Klein. And I'm going to be filing a complaint against you, and I'm going to take it one step further, because I have already filed two petitions before the California Supreme Court on two corrupt attorneys. You are going to be the third one, Mr. Klein, so take note of that. You understand me? You're just one corrupt politician, and the evidence points at you beyond all reasonable doubt.
Councilmember Klein.
Well, colleagues, I hate to get into things like this. We all know the quality of comments that Mr. Peterson Perez, who likes to use an alias, comes up with, and of course, he's walking out, which he should, because he's a despicable person, and I don't think we want to pay any attention to him. He's referring to events of 30-plus years ago. By law firm, actually, I, before I ever came on the council, represented the Palo Alto Weekly. As Bill Johnson has frequently stated in his columns and when he's endorsed me, or the Weekly's endorsed me for election, things of that nature, he frequently mentions this in Palo Alto Online. When I went on the council in 1981, Bill quite correctly said that I should not have any further involvement than the Weekly, and I haven't in the 32 years that have transpired since. Mr. Peterson Perez says that my one-time law partner, James Ware, handled the matter that he refers to, where the Weekly was adjudicated a paper of general circulation, which, by the way, is not a contested matter. It's just a question of, do you have the numbers or do you not? So if Mr. Peterson Perez, given his record of success in courts, not wants to bring an action against me, bring it on.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Now we'll return to the issue at hand, which is, Councilmember Niss, you wanted to just wrap the comments up from the chair.
Oh, is this going to be anticlimactic after that? Exactly. What do I, what should be my act? So let me bring this back, because this program is really important. This, our boards and commissions are the way that we reach into the community and out to the community. You had the library that we discussed, their reach earlier tonight, what they have been doing. We had neighbors abroad who are here, who have been involved with us for many, many years with outreach to cities around the globe. The groups that do this, do this without getting paid, without any compensation whatsoever. And I think they make a big difference in a city like this. We have better luck recruiting than most cities do, and we often have excellent selections. So as we move forward with this tonight, the major differences are those which have already been spelled out, including, I think, better outreach, but also an annual event. Many cities at the county, we also had this, an annual event for your boards and your commissioners. You give them a little bit of food, not a great deal, of course, and it's really an enjoyable time for everyone to come together. And I think it makes a big difference, because this, that word bonding certainly takes place, and people then talk about what an enjoyable experience it is and why others might like doing that. The volunteer fair, I think, is a terrific idea. I know not everyone supported it, but I'll be anxious to see how it comes together, and I think it can be very successful. I hesitate to even mention our new advertising policy, so I'm just going to kind of gloss over that one. I think what has been spelled out in your report tonight, and also the report we've had from the city clerk's office, has been excellent. I would urge you to support it, and maybe just vote right now. Make the motion.
You have to make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think we, except for clamation.
It's such an exciting night, I forgot to make the motion. I moved the staff recommendation.
So that's moved by Councilmember Niss and seconded by Vice Mayor Shepherd, who I believe seconded before the motion was made.
I'd have made the motion if I had to.
Do you wish to speak further to your motion?
No, I don't.
Vice Mayor Shepherd.
Just real briefly, I just have one question first off, well, a statement first. I think it's great that we're getting the commissioners together, because I don't think they know each other. And I think that that would, you should play some games with that, too, when you get them together. But can, my question is, can council be part of that? So council is part of the boards and commissions get-together?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I wasn't sure. Okay, in that case, I think.
You bring the food.
In that case, thank you very much, Policy and Services, for going through this. I had a lot of fun reading each of the motions and each of the votes. I thought that was probably the best way to get through it, so, and it was easy to come across, and I think it's been long overdue, so thank you for the work on this.
Councilmember Holman.
I am happy to support the motion, and I have a couple of amendments to offer. I'm very excited about this and think it is, as someone said, long overdue. I think it'll result in more excitement around our recruitments and hopefully more enjoyment and appreciation for the work that our boards and commissions do. The couple of amendments that I have to offer are, on the staff recommendation, it also has this list of seven items here, and then on, a number eight that I would like to add is, on page two of the staff report, is the Create a Training and Mentoring Program for New Commissioners. I would like to just go ahead and add that one now.
Thanks.
Okay, so that's accepted by the maker?
Yes, absolutely.
Seconder, okay, perfect. That's great. I think that's also something else that's been missing. And a clarification on number seven, excuse me, on number six, is found on page three in the second full paragraph, which is each commission would have a table staffed by a commissioner and/or staff liaison. And I think that's an important component of that. That's agreeable to the maker?
Yes, I have no objection. And while I have the floor for one minute, also, I want to just thank Councilmembers Holman and Price for their work on this, which I should have done when I made the motion.
Thank you. And then the other, the other, the other amendment I would like to offer is one that I should have brought up at the committee and overlooked it, and that is on page 277, excuse me, 278. And B at the top talks about informing the ARB of historical significance and then submit submit recommendation to the ARB, and everywhere it goes through, it talks about the HRB making recommendation to the ARB rather than to the city staff. And the reason I think it ought to be changed to the HRB making recommendation to the city staff, is what this does is it sets up a structure where the HRB is subservient, if you will, to the ARB, and I think that's one of the reasons why we have a hard time recruiting HRB members, because they don't see themselves as having a real role in the community.
So, I'm going to ask the city attorney, but I don't believe the discussion of whether or not the HRB is subservient and how that works is part of Boards and Recruitment Commission, I believe that's a separate issue, and it's not agendized for tonight?
It's in, it's in the document that we're adopting, so.
So, Councilmember Holman, there is a, an ordinance that adjusts all of the procedural aspects of appointing new commissioners and what the timing is, and that allows you to implement the specific process recommendations that have been worked on by the clerk and the Policy and Services Committee. The suggestion that you're making really goes more to the topic of the land use issues, the historical issues, and how those are taken up, and what the various substantive authority is in terms of the various boards and commissions, and that is a separate item that should come up through the discussion process and be specifically agendized, so that folks who are interested in that topic know and can be here and discuss it.
Okay, good enough, then, so, just the two, the two amendments that I offered and that were accepted, and I appreciate that, and I'll be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Oh, just very quickly, I'd like to thank the commission, the clerk's office, for working on this, and over time, working out the details, and everything looks great. Couple of quick questions, when, on number four, where you talk about the options the council would have, that you have running applications, does that mean that if one of the commissions is a spring commission, loses someone in the summer, you would come to the council and we could say, oh, let's include them in the fall?
Yes, we would like to bring the resignation to council, for them to decide if they want to leave it vacant, or if they want us to do a special recruitment.
Right, but you would have running recruitment that you could share with us.
Continuing, and we could bring to you what we have at that point.
Good. Yeah, the other comment was on the ads, I think you want to move away from the general circulation commitment, but at the same time, I guess I do want to emphasize that reaching out to the general public, not just internal contacts of people who are already a part of the system, is an important and valuable thing, and so, some of the advertising spending should be spent on reaching the general public.
We totally agree.
Good, with that, I will support.
Councilmember Berman.
So, I see here a training and mentoring program for new commissioners, but not one for new council members, and I'm just wondering why we're getting left out.
I'll be happy to mentor you later.
Thank you. Was that a threat? No. I think this is great, I think this is fantastic, and, you know, the idea of refreshing a process that's gotten stale is a good one, and sometimes difficult to kind of initiate, but this seems great, and I'm looking forward to the positive results, so good job.
Councilmember Burton.
Well, I also think these are good proposals. Item number six caused me to think about, if we have a special event, how many people are we going to draw, and do we really attract a wide audience? And it caused me to think about, what are the major community events where we're already there? We're often having city booths of one sort by rec. department or utilities, and why can't we include this function within those sorts of activities that we do already? I think about the Mayfet Parade, the summer concerts, in particular, the Fourth of July, the Arts and Wine Festival, World Music Day, now we have the City Camp Hackathon, and these are literally attracting often several thousand people, majority of them, I would suspect, and most of these events are Palo Altons, and they're really a broader array participation from the community, and the booth could be populated by current board and commission members, possibly some council members, so that, I don't think that has to be part of the motion, but I would encourage consideration of that. And then, the one that I had a little bit of struggle on, and I appreciate the intention, is on number five, and we certainly have seen that there is benefit when board and commission members and staff liaisons participate in the recruitment, but there's also a flipside of a danger that it, it kind of starts becoming an insider's game, and that it is a more closed circle that we're recruiting from, rather than a more open one. And so, I would like to offer an amendment language to just clarify the intent there. So, in addition to the language that's already there, continuing by board and commission recruitment program, by broadening potential applicants to be drawn from a larger and more diverse portion of the community. Is that acceptable to the?
Fine with me.
Number five, it would just continue.
It just expands on it. Yeah, is this, I think that that's what we do already, so I was just trying to figure out how this changes what they're doing.
It further clarifies the intent is to reach out, not, not to attract our cronies, but in fact, to reach out to a broad, broader portion of the community.
I think it's what we're doing, I don't think we need to add the language, but I'll go ahead and allow it, so that we can move on tonight.
That's been accepted by the maker and the seconded. All right, seeing no further comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I do have my light on, because there are corrections to the language that's in the motion.
Oh, okay.
The corrections are, if you scroll, yeah, okay, incorporate it into the motion, this is the first one, is incorporated in the motion, colon, to add, creating a training and mentoring program for new commissioners. And then, the second one, incorporated, colon, that six there doesn't mean anything, so, so delete the six, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, add in the language that each volunteer, each table would be staffed by commissioner and/or staff liaison. So, those are corrections to the language.
The mayor asks you to go to a dinner that same night?
Yes.
You don't need to mentor a mentor, right?
No. Are we, Councilmember Holman, are we?
That's fine.
Okay, so if we could vote on the board, assuming those are accepted changes?
They're fine.
So, if we could vote on the board?
I have.
And that passes unanimously. All right. Councilmember questions, comments, and announcements? Seeing no, oh, Councilmember Klein.
I've put this in the packet for next week, but I just wanted to announce that the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency will have a new executive director as of September 30th. It's only had one director its entire 10-plus years of existence, Art Jensen, who has appeared before us on several occasions, and has been a great leader and a recognized leader in water policy throughout the entire state. The new executive director is a woman named Nicole Sanculla, who's been the number two person in the agency, but this was no automatic step up for her, we did have the usual national search, and there were three finalists and all of that, but I just wanted to alert you to the fact that we've got a new water expert in Ms. Sanculla, whom I had no trouble voting for, I've worked with her a lot, and I have a very high opinion of her, so we will have her appear, but she will, volunteering to come talk to us either sometime later in the year or the beginning part of next year, and what I included in the packet is just what I said, plus a copy of her resume.
With that, the meeting is adjourned.